It's 7:04, so start the meeting. Just for everyone's public awareness, Bethland will be joining late, so we will proceed without her, but we will note the time upon her arrival, Colleen, in the minutes if you can do so. So it does have her looking like she's connected, but she's not quite. She's teed up right now. So pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the school committee has modified meeting procedures to ensure the safety of all participants. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Video and audio will be turned off for the public. The meeting will be held via a virtual meeting, internet using Zoom technology. All members of the public are invited to join the meeting through the information that's been posted. For public comments, they will be accepted through email only at this time, only up until the citizens' comments agenda item below, which will be approximately around 7:15. Although with Bethland, just to make a special note, with Bethland arriving a little late, we do anticipate that we may push the citizens' comments later because the comments will be emailed to her directly. And we want to ensure that everything that is being shared with her is able to be read during our public meeting this evening. Citizens' comments relating to the agenda items will be read out loud by the chair and will be memorialized within the public record in minutes. Again, please email citizens' comments before 7:15 Also to note that this meeting is being recorded as a public body, if anyone under a mesh general law section 30A, section 20F. Okay, now I have one more matter of verbiage. As a preliminary matter, this is Natasha Rivera, Vice Chair of the School Committee. I'm going to make to confirm that all members of the school committee and persons participating with the agenda are present and here. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Here.
And Bethland Houlihan will be joining us shortly. Natasha Rivera here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Jane Rickson?
Here.
Jennifer Godet?
Here.
Irene Lee?
Who?
Who, sorry, I get that wrong every time. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I like to prefer to twist on it, I feel like.
I can massacre her names like nobody's business. I sympathize. I'm here.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. And Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Okay. All right, so now that we've done that, we've called the meeting to order. Approval of prior meeting minutes versus ago. So in the folder.
On 5th and April 13th, I think, are the two that I have.
I thought there were three.
Oh, is there another one?
I think so.
Did anyone have any, are we, we want to approve them all at once? Or does anyone have any edits or concerns they want to address them individually?
I put my edits in already.
Was the third one, what was the third minutes?
We have 3, 5, 4, 6, and 4:13.
Oh, I didn't see the 4, 6, okay.
That was the good one.
Do you want to approve them noting the edits provided?
Making fun. Look who's here!
Oh, oh. Hey. Oh, there she is. There we go. All right, we're just at the meeting minutes approval. So, all right, so 7:09, Colleen, Bethland is present.
Bethland and Virgo Houlihan here.
All right, I turn it over to you, Bethland.
Okay, did we approve minutes? Where are we at with that part?
No, we just got to that and we were talking. Lydia had indicated there were some edits that she had provided. It doesn't sound like, I imagine it could be a motion to approve the minutes with the noted edits that Lydia provided. I didn't hear any other discussion. Anyone else wanted to approve them individually, though? That's where we left off.
All right, awesome. Are there, is there any further discussion about the minutes or what Lydia was proposing?
I also had just a couple, which I also put in. So I'm fine with just a blanket approval with changes.
And just to note, they were only grammatical, like a caption period.
Nothing of substance.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
Cool. All right, then, we can just without objection approve with those minor changes from Mario and from Lydia.
Sounds good.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of 3, 5, 4, 6, and 4:13 with edits.
I second.
All right, so then we'll do approval by roll call vote. So Lydia Clancy? Yay. Natasha Rivera?
Yeah.
Oh, Mara, you're over there. Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan, yes. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, did you mention at the beginning, I forgot to bring this up, Natasha, this is being recorded and if anyone else was doing any sort of recording.
I did.
Okay, fantastic.
I did bring up the recording and we did, yep.
And, okay, awesome.
In the comments and email you and.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, cool. Yeah, we didn't discuss that explicitly, so thank you for stepping in for a little bit there. All right, great, so now I'm gonna, we're gonna do the chair report and since I'm here, I'll just give it, but unless you really, if you wanted to, Natasha.
No, I can just add whatever I had put notes in preparation, but I'm sure you'll touch on the same things because we kind of talked about it.
So, well, we can tag on anything you'd like to, but I'll start with this first, just a little good news amidst everything that's going on. A big thanks to the Maynard Tree Corps, members are also members of the Maynard Tree Committee, and all that are involved. And there's gonna be a planting of a tree at Fowler. It's a gift honoring the town's 150th anniversary and the people that make the town a place that thrives. So the proposed location of the tree is on the grounds of the Fowler School at the north side of the building, between the building and the road. It was selected because it's high visibility and it can support the size of the tree, which is a tulip popular, which aspires to be a large and magnificent shade tree, as I understand. And the DPW, the Board of Selectmen, Principal Costello, ourselves, Mary Jane, have all been looked in aware. And aware, DPW will be performing actual installation and then the tree will be, was, has been donated by a town resident and business owner. So I just want to give a huge thanks for that as well. That's just a lovely generous donation. And appreciation for everyone that's been involved in the process and making it happen. So the tree will be installed this coming week and then they'll separately, the next day, have the ceremony and they'll follow social distancing guidelines and they're gonna invite the Beacon Villager so that they can have a videographer. This is the war of the plans. I'm not sure how these have progressed. It may have changed a little, but this was the idea. A videographer to spread the word beyond the 10 people that could be present. So someone from the school committee could be there. So when we get the invitation, I will share it out to see who would like to go and we can all do it out. And just, that's it for that. Anything else on that?
No, actually, I did a. Well, I think, yeah, no, just to thank, I know that it was talked about the Board of Selectmen and highlighting, I actually looked into it, the tulip poplar, because I indicated it wrong when we were talking earlier. And yes, a large magnificent shade tree, as it was described. So I look forward to seeing that in its full glory at some point. And again, just to thank the town, the DPW, Justin, Dan Costello, and all involved in making it work. Apparently, this is a big lift to coordinate all these efforts and so, you know, but it was, it's something really spectacular to look forward to and a great commemorative effort, considering some of the 150th celebrations did not happen this year so far. As, so it's exciting that at least this was, is able to be done in a very social distancing kind of way.
Yes, and I, I've heard about some of the things, you think to plant a tree, there are lots of more hoops than you might think to go through. I've heard about them.
More than a shovel, yeah.
Yeah, yes, so everyone's much appreciated for their efforts. And I just have to give a special shout out to my husband, who's part of the Maynard Tree Corps. So I just had to do that, okay. All right, so also, just for everyone in the committee to be aware and in general, the employee recognition program, that is usually we could submit someone to be considered at the town meeting. That's delayed until the fall and we'll get more information about that very soon. And I did just want to mention that with, there are several search committees that we have school committee representatives on, for all of us to be aware because I missed a communication previously, so I was asking again about one. So I apologize for that. But, so we have Lydia is gonna be on the Business Manager Search Committee and Natasha would be, would be director for, considered for director for Student Services to be on those search committees. And then. I don't think you missed a conversation. I think it was Jen Godet's leading the Business Manager Search and she just felt like it, to extend the invitation to either Mary Branley or myself because we are on the Budget Subcommittee and we knew the previous discussions. Yeah, yeah, no, that's totally, that makes sense. I, there was a couple of things and then I, yeah, anyways, without going into it, it's, 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 just wanted to mention where those stand now. And then, next up is going to be discussed tonight and slight touch upon tonight is, it's part of the MSBA, next steps in the process would be consideration of a school committee member on the Building Committee. So just to have that in mind. We have an upcoming Concom joint meeting on Monday, May 18th at 7:05 PM. And that is also an agenda later on for preparation. I'm sure everyone is aware that the next guidance from the state is coming out on May 18th. So we'll all be waiting with bated breath for where we're going next in this wild journey. And then the last thing, I'm sorry, does this one want to say something?
I had one thing I wanted to add, if you're, but.
Yeah, go right ahead.
No, the, just the yard signs for the high schoolers, the seniors. I just, it was wonderful to see those out and about and just applaud to the Maynard High School team, Principal Kary Janus, his staff, Rita Murphy, Officer Marilla Roggerio, Olga, who really just kind of made a very special delivery for these folks and able to capture these moments. I think, I believe from my understanding, they're gonna be in the Beacon or something. They were taking pictures of them. So I'd like to hear a little bit more clarification and maybe Mary Jane can speak to that piece a little bit more in her superintendent, superintendent report. But I just was loved, loved seeing all the pictures that have been shared with families in Maynard Public School because it, with everything everyone's going through, it's, it feels like, you know, it's something that people can grasp, want to celebrate. So it was, it was really great to see. So thank you for all that of making that happen.
Thank you. And then the last thing that I wanted to just mention upfront was reminder, I know that we don't need any reminders per se, but just while we're putting everything on the front here for larger school committee consideration, public budget hearing is on May 28th. And that has now been, it's been put in the paper and we have an agenda item tonight to also discuss that a little further as we look at how that looks in a remote environment. So that is all that I have, unless there's anything else that my, my co-pilot for the evening, Natasha, if there's anything else you want to add?
Ten minute co-pilot, yeah, no, that was it. That's all I got was to, I was hoping that by the chair report you'd be jumping in. So it was perfect, perfectly past time. Nope, that was, that was it. Thank you.
Awesome, all right. Well, then we are going to move into the interim superintendent report. Mary Jane was having trouble with today with getting frozen, so she's just on audio tonight.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Mary Jane.
Sorry, I dropped my pen. Okay, I've been to a ton of workshops over the past couple of weeks, but I'm specifically gonna highlight the ones that I attended this week. I attended a one from Niasq, which I thought would be interesting because it highlighted some schools in Europe, specifically South Korea, Germany, and Denmark, and what they experienced when it came to social distancing and reopening the schools. So I actually, you know, they talked about, you know, how the government helped them reopen, talked about the impact of the budget. You know, one of the things they talked about was providing separate healthcare rooms in the event of somebody, you know, somebody becoming infected when it happened and about sanitation. It was pretty informative. I did attach a copy of the link for all of you to watch the video. So at some point, if you want to take a look at it and just see what they thought, it might be helpful. I also attended a tri-county roundtable that was yesterday. And again, some of the discussions were on budgets at the state and local level, on the Student Opportunity Act, which they said initially, they thought perhaps it was DOA, and they'd mentioned that again today. And then I got an email later today that said the commissioner has now extended the SOA deadline until June 19th. But stay, stay put on that one. He's not, you know, suggesting that we start submitting it, but they've been at least moved till June 19th. So that's kind of good news, considering we thought perhaps we weren't gonna have it, but still too early. They also talked about extended year programs and, you know, perhaps opening school year and end of year. Really, the main crux of all these conversations with these superintendents is we're really waiting for a lot of guidance. A lot of people feel like they're in holding patterns right now. You know, nobody wants to do things in isolation. So we're really waiting for a lot of information and things to come down the pipe. I mean, I think everybody's really waiting for May 18th. I don't think that's gonna be a do or die date for anything, but we're hoping to get more information. And, you know, I know a lot of people are concerned what's happening, but unfortunately, we really are trying to work together and come up with a plan as superintendents. So wait for the guidance that comes up. So, you know, we are meeting pretty regularly as groups. This morning, Jennifer, myself, and Irene attended a MASs and Masbo budget presentation. It was about an hour and a half and some of the things they talked about were budget considerations for next year, PPE for schools, you know, how are you gonna budget for some of that information? Maybe your CARES Act money can be used for purchasing those things. Again, the SOA deadline. And they're really worried about chapter fund, chapter 70 funding and what it looks like. So there was, again, some concerns. A little bit of more information, but not a whole lot different than, than what was happening. A lot of these funding are waiting, we're waiting for legislation on. So we're hoping to, again, still wait around for some more information. Tomorrow, I will be attending competency determination for seniors who haven't passed the MCAS. I believe we only have one and hopefully we'll have information on that. And right now, it looks like if a student has progressed into the specific area, say, for example, a student did, didn't pass the math MCAS, if they had the four years of math, we could give them their diploma. So that's something we're looking at and hopefully I'll have more clarification on that tomorrow. I do want to thank Senator Jamie Eldredge for connecting us with a benefactor, who might be, I say this maybe, he may be providing the town of Maynard and Maynard Public Schools with 11,000 disposable masks for the residents that the donor would like to remain anonymous. So initially, when I had a conversation with Greg and Senator Eldredge, we had really, they were focusing on students and families who were low free and reduced lunch and low socioeconomic status. But once our conversation continued, he was very, what's the word? He was offering to outfit the whole town if need be. So we asked for 11,000. We'll see what we get. I'm sure we'll get somewhere between, initially, we wanted 3,000, so we'll show, get somewhere between 3 and 11,000. So whatever little bit we get would be, would be great.
That's amazing.
Yep, on Tuesday, May 12th, the Maynard High School had its winter sports banquet virtually. Adam said it went pretty well, a couple little hiccups here and there, but for the most part, it went out pretty well. So as you're all aware, the COVID-19 has really disrupted a lot of the normal rituals for high school students that mark graduation. So this Saturday night at 8 o'clock, several major networks will be covering a national graduation celebration with former President Barack Obama. So you could, I also gave you a copy of that, that you can click on the link. So hopefully our seniors, we put that out to the seniors and their families to take a look at that as well. So try to have another virtual graduation. This is not only for high schools, but it's also for college students. So we're hoping to let them experience that. It's not exactly the same, but it'd be nice to, you can say, you know, President Obama spoke at my graduation, so, even if it was virtually. So I do want to say thank you to Mr. Kary Janus, Ms. Murphy, Officer Roggerio, and Olga Drav. They spent Wednesday morning placing class of 2020 month signs for our seniors around town. What I really like about the signs is I've looked at other signs from other towns and what ours are different is our student names are on them, so that is really cool.
We're better.
Yeah, he's awesome. Beacon Villager will be putting something in the paper, showing pictures. I do have a few pictures that they've sent out for a couple of students we already have by Mr. Kary Janus, but they will be putting something in the paper. I was going to mention this next time, but I may as well mention it since I'm on that topic. Anyway, Beacon Villager will also be highlighting our seniors over the next few weeks for seniors who would like their bios put in the paper. The Beacon Villager has also teamed up with the high school to try to honor a couple of seniors a week in their newspaper as well. So that, that is also taking place. Business manager interviews will begin next week. We have six candidates that we're choosing to move forward, so that's moving along. Special Ed Director, we are also moving on that. I believe this candidates were looked at. Not sure they were quite chosen yet, but that, that's also moving along and I expect to have some update on that by the beginning of next week. End of year closing, I mentioned a little bit last time, under the direction of the Leadership and Operations Principals, they form committees at each of their schools to create a plan to address end of year operations. Some things that will be addressed will be staff and student personal safety, you know, books and chromebook collection and transition celebrations, as well as graduation. We are hearing, I heard, I guess, beginning of, the beginning of the week that we could be hearing information about end of year programs by June 1st. So having all of these contingency plans in place would be, would be a great thing before those safeguards were put in place. But we're hearing now it may be a little bit longer. So either way, we'd like to have some plans in place for that to happen. We have the reopening of school next year under the direction of the Curriculum and Instruction Principals. They are focusing on three possible scenarios for next year. And it will be what schools normally do, you know, have a normal opening, having a hybrid model, perhaps remote in the morning, classes in the afternoon, or completely remote learning, or every other day, you know, the certain scenarios that they're looking to do. They've also formed committees at their schools. Once the committees at schools have addressed each of these issues, we will be forming a district task force, which includes town members as well as, I'm sorry, town administrators and DPW directors to take those recommendations along with the Department of Public Health and our school representatives to come up with a plan for next year. And hopefully we'll have guidance from DESV sometime in June on this. And I believe that's all that I have today.
Nice job, nice job on the contingency plans.
Yeah.
Got two, two. We don't have any plans yet, but we have, we have the things in motion to get the plans going.
There you go.
And Mary Jane?
Yeah.
Is this, is this similar to how, I know the superintendents have been talking, so this is a similar path while you're awaiting guidance from the state that superintendents are following this type of path on their own, kind of just to be ready to kind of go? Is that what the understanding is?
Some are, some are waiting in general, but I'd rather be ahead of the curve so that we can really make adjustments to what we have, rather than starting from scratch. A lot of them are trying to do things, things like that, especially the towns and the big cities. They, they really can't wait. It takes a lot, a lot more strategic, you know, busing may be an issue as far as, you know, what's that gonna look like next year? I mean, obviously, half day and half day may be an issue because you'd have to have double, double transportation. So, you know, you know, hopefully everybody's doing, right, doing that. So the conversations that I've had with my superintendents in my area are really beginning to have these plans. And then hopefully, when the big plans are released, they can take all those little plans and work with the town and move forward at that point. But we're trying to involve the nurses who have been very instrumental in helping us get, get these things as well. So Department of Public Health and, and our school nurses have been really good staying abreast of the situation.
Mary Jane?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question in terms of the nurses?
Yep.
I have, I, I understand that there is some concern about not having a lead nurse and also not having a floater nurse, given the upcoming year and what we might be facing. Is that in consideration at all?
Well, Janet Lamy really has been considered our lead nurse. She's at the high school. But as far as the floating, there's no, hasn't really been much, we haven't really had much discussion on that.
Part of the reentry planning process will be to look at all of those logistics to see, and we're expecting very specific recommendations from the state in regards to the public health components of our reopening. And so once we see what those components are, then there may be an opportunity for a variety of places where we need to invest additional dollars. You heard Ms. Rickson speaking about, you know, possibility of having two separate health rooms, which would obviously, we'd have to do some rearranging of spaces in the three buildings in order to make that happen. So we're really hoping that we're gonna get, and Janet, who has been instrumental in addition to Jessica and Sarah, you know, she feels very confident that the, the school nursing representative on the reopening task force at the state level is advocating very strongly for specifics like that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mary Jane?
Yeah.
All right, you're good. All right, I haven't seen if anyone else said anything they wanted to ask about, but. So we are now going to move into the next agenda item, which is number five, citizens' comments. So I have been monitoring emails and making sure that if people know that they've been received. So the way that I am going to do this, and you'll see on the agenda if there was anyone that had anything else, they, they need to be sure they submitted, is to start from the lowest one that I have on my list. So let me do that, let me just make sure I have the lowest one because there's been a lot of emails. Okay, I had, I put a system in place so I make sure I would try to.
Well, and Bethland, actually, is something I didn't note in the beginning, but I think might, now might be a, a good time that we, for future agendas, we're gonna clarify that in the subject line. Because we do obviously get communications that people do not want read during public comments and so to respect those individuals going forward, I think clarity around putting for public comments in the subject line would, would help us and also to respect the people who, who have their intentions being met.
Yes, thank you. So we, obviously, we're refining the process as we go and it just, we realized that that will be an important distinction. So we're sure, I'm, one more, seeing something in the inbox that we know whether it's to be read or not. Okay, so I'm gonna start at the bottom here. So the first one that I have, and again, I also have to promise, some people apologize, some people, if I get any names wrong, some of them, it's funny. Most names, you may or may not recognize them, but then trying to say them out loud sometimes is a different story than when you've ever said maybe some of those first names. So I really apologize if I get any names wrong. Okay, so the first is Justine St. John. She, her public comments, citizens' comments, "Good evening. I would like to express my concern about the possibility of Principal Costello being moved to a 10-month position, especially this year. My kids both went through the Fowler School with two different administrators, but I have to say that even looking from the outside, I am stunned and impressed at the positive impact." at the positive impressions Principal Costello has made in the short time he has been here. I remember meeting him as co-chair of the Fowler PTO and walking away not believing that he had volunteered to possibly shave his head for a fundraiser, which we hadn't yet asked him to do. He was really focused on creating a school community we could all be proud of, and I have watched him continue to make progress with that over the last two years, over these last two years. The time Green Meadow had a small fire in the gym and the kids were brought to Fowler, he posted on Facebook, giving concerned parents a glimpse into how their kids were doing and reassuring them everything was okay. His work with Safe Roots to School, I was impressed to hear he is speaking at the state awards for this again this year, and Fowler has been deemed a gold partner and Green Meadow a bronze. Engaging the students in spelling and geography bees, his support of teachers who are presenting at a school committee meeting, the endless engagement right now in the middle of a pandemic, bingo games, trivia nights, morning meetings, the pie day, P-I-day, P-I-E, pie giveaway. This is just what I, as a community member with no kids in that school notice. I can't imagine everything else he is doing as well. I realize it has been said that the intent for this position has always been as a 10-month administrator. I haven't been privy to those conversations, however, I just ask you to consider this. We are still in the midst of a pandemic, and we don't even know what school will look like in the fall. We also have a brand new superintendent starting in July. Wouldn't it be better to keep Principal Costello, someone who has been known for his community engagement and superior communication, communication style as a full-time principal? We do not know what will change during the summer in preparation for the fall, and this also includes building plans, especially with social distancing. I think it is vital to have him here with his guidance and his engagement throughout the summer as well. Thank you for your time." And Justine signs and notes she's an, a Maynard High School parent. Okay, so next is from, I do, okay. Let me make sure. Okay. Jen Krenak. Hello, I have heard rumblings within the community that there is a push to renegotiate Dan Costello's contract back to a 12-month position. From a budgetary standpoint, this is not feasible. If Fowler has two principals with a 12-month contract, then any other principals with 10-month contracts will then have the foundation to argue that their contracts are unjust and must be renegotiated as well. Dan Costello's job was always supposed to be a 10-month position. That is the basis of the dual-principal model. I have been present for presentations where the dual-principal model has been explained. Changing the dual-principal model now would be detrimental to our budget that is already unstable. A gentle reminder that budget cuts of this nature don't personally affect you because your children don't require aides. Mine does, and sadly, a 24 to 36K budget rearrangement happens to neatly coincide with the salary of a special education aide. Our at-risk students can't afford to have even more support removed from them, from them to appease community members who haven't looked at who this budget change will affect. The dual-principal model is something that you have all stood by, so please stand by it now. Please stand by it by not renegotiating a contract that was always supposed to be for a 10-month term. Okay. Got that one, okay, next one. This is from Hillary, Hillary Griffiths. Hello, I have been hearing that Dan Costello and his family have been pushing their friends and some Fowler families into advocating to the school committee and even publicly trying to guilt the school committee and superintendent into offering him a higher salary for the coming year. First, I think this is inappropriate behavior and should not be rewarded. Second, this would set a precedent for all teachers and administrators. Does the school committee really want this to be the mechanism by which employees engage in negotiations or address their grievances? Third, at a time when desperately needed paraprofessionals are being cut at significant harm to the town's most vulnerable children, and at a time when school districts throughout the country are preparing for significant budget cuts due to the economic impact of the coronavirus, it is observed to be giving three administrators. As you know, the comparable positions at Green Meadow and the high school will want comparable salary increases as well, significant pay increases. It would be a slap in the face to all struggling families and inconsistent with the values of the majority of the town to increase cuts to needed positions in order to give into Dan and his family's coercion and offer him a significantly higher salary. It may be beneficial for school community members to reiterate at tonight's meeting the history of the position and its salary, so that those misinformed community members who are being misled by Dan and his family, and as a result are reaching out to you under the belief that their friend is being harmed, can understand that although they may not have known, both Dan and anyone who keeps informed of school committee meetings knows that this, his position has always been intended to be a 10-month position with a comparable salary, and that his current offer is consistent with the salaries being offered to the individuals in the comparable positions in the other school, two schools. I commiserate with your fears, but please stay strong and uphold your responsibilities to the town. Thank you, Hillary. Okay, next is Mark Stackless. Dear members of the Maynard School Committee, it has recently come to my attention that the position of Mr. Dan Costello, principal of leadership, is going to be changed from a full-time position to a 10-month position effective July 1st, 2020. The purpose of my email is to voice my wholehearted disappointment and objection to this decision. Such a decision does not put best interests of the students and families of the Fowler School first. In my opinion, Mr. Costello has been the glue that has held the Fowler School response to COVID-19 and remote learning program together since the beginning of the stay-at-home ordered-ish order issued by Governor Baker. I cannot imagine not having Mr. Mr. Costello working throughout the summer to lead the modification of the current remote learning plan at Fowler, innovate other remote learning options, and continue to support the Fowler community at large as we move forward towards a new normal. In my honest observations, there has not been a unified message from the Maynard Public Schools throughout this pandemic. While we do not have a child in Green Meadow, I will say that the response from Fowler has been fantastic. Mr. Costello has taken a personal interest in the well-being of each student and family in that building. He is responsive to specific questions posed and is honest and thorough in his answer. I cannot the same, sorry, I cannot say the same for the responses from the high school and the central office, where we have received canned responses that do not even acknowledge the actual inquiry and don't come close to addressing, addressing the issue being inquired about. COVID-19 is not going anywhere fast, and if I were in the leadership role that you as school committee members are in, there is no doubt that I would want someone with Dan Costello's energy, caring, and innovation setting the pace as we move forward. The remote learning to close out this year has been acceptable based upon the extremely short notice. However, I would hope that as a leadership of the Maynard Public Schools, the school committee is preparing for the possibility that we will again be in a remote learning situation in the fall, where parent expectation and Commonwealth of Massachusetts expectation will be much higher. If remote learning is not ready in the fall, people are going to be looking to you folks as to why more robust and thorough programs are not ready to go. Why would you not want to have someone of Dan's caring and abilities working throughout the summer to be sure the program is in place? I think that value, I think that value provided would far exceed the 12,000 being saved in the budget and that the students, Fowler and the Maynard Public Schools be the direct recipients of that value. Respectfully, Mark Stackless. Okay.
We should have split these up, Beth.
I know, I'm doing, no, no, I. Okay, um, this one is from Anne Stackless. Ms. Rickson and members of the Maynard School Committee, I recently, I recently heard that Dan Costello's role is going to be reduced from a 12-month position to a 10-month one with a corresponding pay cut, and I'm writing to express my thoughts and sincere disappointment about this decision. My apologies for always going to be a lengthy email, but I vehemently oppose this issue and need to explain why. We've had children in the Maynard School District for the past 10 years. We have been through many budget cycles and have had to accept the consequences of budget cuts, many of which were difficult to accept. But this decision is by far the most irrational and potentially devastating one that we have been faced with, given the state of our school because of COVID-19. I understand that Dan's position was initially a 10-month position, but given the unprecedented times we're in, especially how it relates to education, I implore you to consider why his role is desperately needed for 12 months and to make an exception. Times have changed beyond what we could have imagined back when his original contract was created, and I ask that you are flexible enough in your thinking to consider that critical fact. The current situation with COVID and the overwhelming impact it has had on education and on our children has created an impossible reality of this spring by trying to educate our children remotely, and it threatens to continue into the fall. In this summer of all summers, having a leader like Dan with all of his responsibilities, leadership, and expertise is critical to ensuring that we are prepared for the fall. We've been hobbling along this summer, and all our children are doing enough to get by, but I would certainly not say there has been any value added to learning. Oh, I'm sorry, I would certainly not say there has been any value-added learning. Come a new school year, if remote learning continues, or if a quasi-remote in-person hybrid is put into place, we have to have a well-thought-out logistical learning plan for our children's educational sake. To not have Dan working all summer to make sure this happens would have devastating results, and that's if Dan stays. To have Dan leave and to be left with no one comes September, or a new person, would have even further devastating results. Is everyone muted? That needs to be muted. We have three children, ninth, sixth, and fourth grade. So I will unapologetically say that I have a lot of perspective on our schools. Furthermore, this is our sixth year at Fowler, and we were there when Jeff Mula was principal. Then when Sharon Seeler was prince, was. When Ms. Seeler was there, the building was on fire. Fowler was a mess. Exceptional faculty were leaving, behavioral issues were at a high, and nothing was being done about it. There was little school community or pride. Ms. Seeler never came to anything and did not promote any sort of school spirit. There were times that I was literally scared for our son's safety in seventh grade because behaviors had gotten so out of hand, and there were literally no consequences. My husband and I even discussed the possibility of putting our children in private school because it gotten so bad. At that time, we also had a fourth grader there, and we did notice that the younger fourth and fifth graders were not negatively impacted by Sharon's inability to lead or by the behavioral and safety issues. I think it is because of the nature of them still being considered elementary and the age of those children. However, Dan was hired to right the sinking ship, and he single-handedly turned Fowler around, and I mean that without exaggeration. There was an absolute sea change last year at Fowler, thanks to all of Dan's efforts. That's bolded, underlined. In fact, our oldest son said at the end of his eighth grade year that it was his favorite year ever, and part of that was because of Dan Costello. Dan brought an energy, passion, and positivity to Fowler that had not been there. Having Dan at Fowler influenced our thinking, and we no longer consider taking our child, children out of Fowler. Dan truly created a Fowler family. Ms. Rickson, I actually talked to you in person about Dan's impact last year at one of our parent coffees, one of your parent coffees.
Beth, one question for you, oh, are you?
Yeah.
Are we, so are all of the one emails that we received, are we going to be reading? Because I don't know if they were all indicated for public comments.
So I am, and I am taking all the ones that said to read them as public comments. So just to be aware, I received a few follow-up emails that said, I respectfully ask that this be read as public comment.
Got it.
We, anyone who wanted to remain anonymous, we're not allowed to read, right?
Right.
Okay.
We can mention that there was another, like generally mention that, and that's what I was planning to at the end for. And there was one, for reasons, obviously, people don't always want to be named.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me see where I was, okay. Over the past two months, Dan has been the only administrator in the district that has shown us to us on a daily basis how much he cares for the students and the families. He has time and again gone above and beyond to ensure that families stay connected and that kids stay connected to school. He's not doing all the different things that he does for himself, he's doing them for the kids. Our oldest son is now an MHS, and the lack of communication, little attempts at connections, and only doing the bare minimum by the administrators and staff has been absolutely abysmal and completely unacceptable, in my opinion. It is downright pathetic. Dan's efforts lie in stark contrast to MHS, and he is engaged and in touch on a daily basis. He thinks outside of the box, goes the extra mile, and bottom line, cares about the kids, cares is bolded and capital, the families and the situation we're all in. I'd like to list all the things that Dan has done since March 12th, our last day at school. Sends a videotape morning announcements that include reading announcements, the pledge, calling out names of kids whose birthday it is, giving fun facts, and announcing important dates that week. This is in our inbox every morning. Conducts Wednesday night game night for kids to participate in online, always a fun time. Conducts grade-level and community meetings every week online. Sent out surveys to students and to parents to get feedback on remote learning. Conducts Facebook Live meetings every Sunday night for parents. Often presents findings from surveys, discusses topics at hand, answers questions. Conducted an online parent coffee with parents to participate and to ask questions. Has called me, not emailed consistently every week to check in on how things are going with my sixth and fourth grader and how things are going for me trying to homeschool. Consistently responds to emails with honest and clear communication. Dan is hands down the face of the Fowler School. Dan does not have to be doing any of these things. The high school isn't even doing one of these things, not one, but Dan does it because he cares. He cares about the kids, about the parents, about the staff, and about our situation. He's thinking about what the fall may look like and already trying to figure out how administrators, administrators will make it work. If anything, Dan should be getting a pay raise, not a pay cut for all he has done. Dan has proven he is the most valuable administrator Maynard Schools has. I say that from 10 years of experience in the schools. It's not anything about some of the underperforming and subpar teachers we have to continue to keep their, we have continued to keep their jobs year after year, but someone like Dan, like Dan, to get his contract reduced, which may cause him to leave. How does that happen? Have you really thought through what this summer will look like without him in his position to plan for the fall? Should we have a different model of learning? What if we are allowed to return to school, but in a modified way? Who is going to figure all that out? What worse way can you set our children, our teachers up for utter failure than not to have the building principal there to figure out those logistics so that we can be prepared come September? I beg you to not be shortsighted in your decision in all these, in this of all summers. Our children deserve more. I implore you to reconsider as I truly worry about what the fall is going to look like for my three children. Dan is the only administrator who's shown true leadership and dedication over the past two years, and especially over the past two months. His work has been exceptional. I cannot imagine where we as a family would be right now had Dan not been at the helm. I know how my husband and I feel about MHS right now and its complete absence of any leadership, and it feels awful. And it makes me question why we are sending our child there. Dan is the most valuable asset, asset that you have to continue to lead us through these horrible uncharted waters, bolded. Please do not make a huge mistake that would have severe consequences for the 500 children at Fowler. Thank you for your consideration, Anne Stackless. Okay, let me just, I got an email in the meantime, so let me just check in on that. One second. Okay. And this one is from Sarah Donnelly. Sorry, she's just giving an intro, okay. I'm aware of the considerations for a 12 and 10-month principal format for our district. That said, I would like to share a couple serious concerns I have regarding this format, especially at this time. One, decisions have been made over and over again in this district that have unintended, unintended consequences. And I really fear some recent decisions with Principal Costello's contract may be one of them. Dan Costello is tremendously popular with our students. It's my understanding he is well-respected by staff, and he has done a fantastic job in his role and partnership with Mr. Barth at Fowler. Additionally, his students and many, if not most, parents absolutely love capitalized having him as their principal. These are obviously my personal opinions, but they seem to be popular Maynard and resonate with others as well. By minimizing his salary and principal position from 12 to 10 months, I have serious concerns of this creating a situation in, in which he may have to walk away from MPS. I feel we would be doing a very serious disservice to our entire school community if this were to happen. A top priority of our district's focus, especially when dealing with the budget, should be on problem solving, how we retain the shining stars of both our people and programs in our district. I am keenly aware the school committee tries to make decisions that are founded in affecting the least number of students possible. How can we risk gain the loss of one of our best principals, affecting one entire school in our district of three, be worth not problem solving this issue in a different way? Two, our district is presented with the monumental task of developing very well-thought-out preparations for coming back to school in the fall. Whether it is, whether it is as a host of new protocols, split sessions, a hybrid of online-in-school learning, or who knows what, it is clear that it will take the effort of a cohesive team, including both building principals, making these decisions together in order for it to be successful. Minimizing Dan's role at Fowler will be detrimental to this challenging preparation being a success and may further jeopardize the successes we have built upon at Fowler under Dan and Mike's great partnership and leadership. On the parent-student ends of things, Dan has done a fantastic job helping transition Fowler over to distance learning this year, and I know many other Fowler families feel the same way. I would feel confident with him helping lead the way for whatever preparations are needed for our return in the fall. Thank you, Sarah Donnelly. I got that one. And I do want to just say, we did have one come in that wanted to remain anonymous, but that was wanted to keep the change from 12 to 10 months and was opposed to considering leaving at 12 months.
Bethel and I also received one that was sent directly to me and they wanted to remain anonymous because they were afraid of retribution.
And I don't see any others. So I think I got everything. I just want to double check again. I started them, but there are a few people that are like, oh, wait. And added something, or so I just want to make sure I did it right. Okay, very good. And just for everyone to know, we receive these like this and then they, they are public record, they become part of the public record and make sure that they're distributed to the leadership. So Mary, I sent it to Mary Jane to pass along as she sees fit and to all the school community members, obviously. In some of these cases, people send them to every school community member, but so just everyone's aware. All right. And also to be clear, as much as we're not responding to in the moment to this, I do want to say that we are obviously in the middle of these conversations. So I don't know if that's obvious, but so everyone is aware. So.
Maybe another email.
Thank you. Some, I did have one come in last time, a little later on, and it didn't like show up or I missed it because of something else. So thank you for.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is from Melissa Sanders. I vehemently disagree with any renegotiation of Dan, renegotiation of Dan Costello's contract. As many have stated, he's perceived as a savior of Fowler school and for many who are not his favorite students, that could not be further from the truth. The bullying issues at Fowler have gotten out of control under his administration. Many students have said they do not feel safe with his behavior and offers in school and his presence makes them uncomfortable. His 10-month contract was mentioned numerous times under the previous school committees and should not be a surprise to anyone. Our budget is too administrative heavy as is. Our children deserve more than an education with just principles. He's often a detriment to our school with outbursts, rogue Instagram and TikTok accounts and loud and abrasive antics in the building. Please keep this contract as is. It is not fair to the other 10-month principals who went through proper hiring procedures and continue to follow the rules and act respectful, respectfully. Thank you, Melissa Sanders. Okay. So we are now going to move on. I'm going to talk a little bit about.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everybody. I mean, obviously for their, all their emails. I know we're not commenting on them specifically, but I know this is a very important matter for the community. I want to recognize that we're all going through a lot of things personally, professionally, budget crisis, all of these matters that are kind of coming to a head, and I just wanted to just express my understanding that this is tough, this is tough subject matter here. And I know this is one of many tough subject matters that we're going to have going forward. So, but thank you for everyone who shares your advocacy, whichever way you feel.
Thank you. Okay, so moving into the budget status discussion. There were a few points of clarification that Natasha and I kind of followed with after, followed up with after our last meeting around the budget process in general, and particularly this is going to relate to, end up relating to the public hearing. But we wanted to understand, so kind of independent from the public hearing, we wanted to understand a little better what really, what belongs within the purview of the school committee for the budget decisions and what doesn't, and getting more more into the granular detail of that. I feel like we keep returning again to make sure and see, because when you're actually trying to apply and implement these ideas of where the roles and responsibilities lie with the different bodies and it's not always as clear as you think it should be on the surface of it. So, so we had a conversation with her. Dorothy Presser at the Mass Association of School Committees and she's been our contact there. She's done some trainings for us previously and has been a school committee member for many years herself and is in leadership at the Mass Association of School Committees. So I sent, everyone has the notes, so they're under agenda number seven, agenda item number seven, but they relate to this agenda item too. So some, I don't know, do you have anything like bigger picture to add to that piece of it, Natasha?
Well, I guess like before we, I just thought, you know, we've had all these different budget discussions that come up and, and so I think it was helpful to, if we take a couple of steps back and talk about maybe what the intention of what actions have happened already, what those meant, where, and how that leads us up till to now, because I think there was some disconnect at a couple of school committee meetings where what, what actions are we taking as a school committee by voting? The, making sure that the public feels that the, or understands that the public hearing is, is, is truly to capture their feedback, what is going, whatever, whatever their feedback is on the budget, and then also to ensure that there is an understanding that the school committee will be voting afterwards on the budget that we have and previously what was presented in December, December 19th, I think it was, was the presentation to the school committee by the district. And our vote was on a line item to make a recommendation to send it to the Board of Selectmen. At that time, that budget was not approved because we did not have our budget yet back from the town. And so it just is a clear distinction, I think is important to highlight for, for the public that we did not vote on the budget itself yet. We voted on accepting the recommendation of that specific dollar to then be sent to the town and the Board of Selectmen. And I think Dorothy was helpful in clarifying that understanding a little bit because that seemed to be where there was some back and forth before, and just the vote after the public hearing is what will be us voting on the budget.
So yeah, I think that, first off, I just want to say Colleen, Lydia is muted right now.
Oh.
Unmute her. I don't know, not that she particularly want to say anything per se right now, but I did want to make sure you could. Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, and I guess that what we, just to wrap our head around some of this a little better and get some of those distinctions, one of the things that Dorothy said in, in principle, we could, the, the school committee could vote and change the budget every meeting. So like that's the, the level what she was saying. She's like, I wouldn't recommend it. But kind of technically you could. So to one, just kind of, she was just started that as the, you know, just to be aware of that. And then.
Staffing piece I thought was also important to.
Yeah.
Clarifying.
Um, do you want to mention that Natasha? Because it's right there and I know that that was something that struck out, it struck out at you from what she said.
Yeah, so I know that a lot of our conversations are, you know, talking about adding FTEs, a half FTE and and really have an understanding of what is under the purview of the school committee and what we need to know versus what is considered operational and personnel matter. And there's sometimes a very distinction might be a little bit understood differently. And, and so how Dorothy explained it, which I thought was very clear and helpful to understand was that the number of positions funded and staffing changes are under the purview of the school committee, which sometimes it could be a wash, so operational, that might be operational wash. But if there are shifts for reasons such as programming, then we would want to make sure we have a conversation about that. There also could policy, be policy implications which would warrant the school committee to have way in and understanding of what the fundamental decisions and behind that, that consideration. So, you know, one thing that comes to mind right now is we were talking about adding the co-talk classroom. And so all those conversations we're having and how important that is to really be able to have the school committee ask and have information on, on that is a relevant part of our discussion.
And then the bigger one, this is just also helpful for me to, when you have the kind of the bigger picture to kind of orient, so, which I think I would say we have been really, has been really in consideration in the way that it was even recommended this year. Are we using the resources in our budget to further our goals? So that's the guide for specific questions that we may have. So that includes monitoring those goals towards any programmatic changes. Monitoring towards goals of any programmatic changes. So monitoring to see like
progress.
Are we actually getting to what we are trying to accomplish by this change?
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's a very important thing to highlight too. So as we're talking about either expanding a program or changing or shifting, understanding the rationale behind the, the data or the review to expand or, or if it needs to be revisited, I think also is, is something that is again, part of, needs to be part of our discussion, which oftentimes we, we do get. But I think for the public to be aware that it is a critical piece that, that the school committee must either have access to and be able to deliberate on as part of our decision-making.
And then the other thing was, we did ask just for her understanding of some of this was as much for our own clarity to COVID-19 and other district approaches, and I know that, I know that Mary Jane and the leadership team have really been monitoring and, and talking with other districts about what they were doing. So just to say that moving to something like a once, one-twelfth plan where you're just spending one-twelfth of your budget, that would be something that you have in mind, but it's only when you'd like need to go back to the drawing board altogether. And so like if for some reason the budget wasn't passed at all and we're past the fiscal year and we need to try to figure out, then we need to go to one, one-twelfth until a budget is actually passed by the town, something, a scenario like that. I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just pointing out the scenario.
Which I think is the hard, the hard part. Yeah, the hard part. And she did highlight, that's if we're not able to pass a budget at town. I think the hard part about that in our current reality though, is that a one-twelfth budget is you're looking at where you were last year and you probably, we could have had more revenue at that, for that, that period of time, which is not necessarily what we would want to mirror. But that is the distinction of where that would normally fall in line is when you have, you don't have a budget that's able to be approved by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. And then the consideration of, all right, so we're in a very unusual spot. And so the thought would be, we're not cutting before we need to, before we have any idea what that would need to look like. But that we're having those discussions about priorities and what we would, what we would cut first and what is sacred. As we move forward and consider, those conversations are happening and we're kind of ready to set the stage for what needs to come next. So that was kind of what she was saying. As a suggest, obviously, we do what makes sense for us, but this, I thought they were just helpful for guidelines for consideration for how we would move forward from here.
Same.
Yeah.
Much of our budget is related to salaries and staff. Did she, I mean, obviously, most of our budget has to remain the same throughout the year. So I guess I don't quite understand how that would play in. But other than freezing, like we've done before, you know, freezing supplies and things of that, professional development and, and that, but it's, it's not very much of the percentage of the pie that we'd be able to talk about.
Well, Mary, I know this came up at FinCom recently as they were preparing for town meeting because they're, you know, signing off the warrants and in June, the June meeting will be, part of that is signing on the budget. Something just to highlight and for everyone's awareness is that it was very clear, this budget will be evaluated again, fall meeting potentially. And, and, you know, because right now, all the unknown pieces of receipts, revenue coming into the town is still yet unknown. The treasurer doesn't, doesn't have that information. What's coming in funding from the state, we don't have, we don't, that's still yet unknown. But what was very clear from, from the conversations that I heard them deliberating on is that all, all schooled, all town departments, not just the school department, all town departments will be expected to revisit their budget for, for deep cuts potentially at some level yet unknown. And so it's hard to anticipate that now and, and knowing, and Greg, the town administrator, did, you know, also share, which, which we already know that any of those pieces of require collective bargaining. So there would be any of those, if that were to happen, you know, would have a lot of extensive conversations about if that requires spurloes or layoffs or any of that. So yeah, it's not just, you know, I know it's a very bigger picture of yet unknown. And it's scary stuff, right? Because, you know, as much as we try to keep things out of the classroom, you know, to the level of what they're talking about, you know, current times are way worse than 2008, 2009, and you know, that and that crisis that's happened. And so I, I think it's important for public awareness, for all of us to know that, you know, what we vote on at our public hearing and what the town happens to vote on in June is, is not going to be necessarily what the rest of FY21 is going to look like. Potentially, it's just scary stuff.
So I think from the art conversation with Dorothy, that's most of it, and I think we could return to her too. We could just have the conversation with, with then, you know, with Mary Jane, Irene and Jennifer and the leadership team tried to see consideration, you know, just we, so out of that conversation, we're saying, well, that's because we want to make sure we were holding the space for those considerations as they come up to have the budget update on every, and because it's such a moving target and so many moving parts right now, that that's going to be on every school committee agenda. So have that in mind. And then I would think some of that, that work of the starting work of that prioritization and contingency planning would fall, would start in the budget subcommittee. So, and I was, this is, this is open for any, any other comments or thoughts from anyone.
Well, we have, we have our FinCom joint meeting on Monday, so I'm sure we'll, we'll hear directly from them directly on their perspectives of, you know, concerns and whatnot, on what's been presented and what's ongoing as well. So I think it's absolutely right, keeping it part of the agenda. I know the Board of Selectmen have committed to, to that as well. You know, just hearing Mary Jane say the Student Opportunity Act, now, now they're extending it. And so it's like day to day, you know, things change and we don't know that. All that, you know, it just happens right away. So it'd be great if we didn't have anything new that, but it seems like every time it's on the agenda, we do have something that we really need to address and just highlight.
And Mary Branley and I have a tri-board budget subcommittee meeting on the 26th as well. So I'm sure we'll be getting new information and new perspectives and new directions then too. We're discussing.
So I'm sorry, Lee, I'm sorry. So are we going to not have the public budget hearing in May 28th? I guess, is that what you're saying?
No, we're wanting to move forward with that.
I think we decided that that was the very latest that we could have it before the town meeting.
Yeah.
There's a town two weeks later, so we tried to push it out as far as we could. So we'll know about as much as we can by that point.
Yeah.
Irene, I hate to put you on this spot because I feel like I haven't asked you, but I didn't know if there was any momentum on the transportation piece. I know you. but I didn't know if there was any momentum on the transportation piece. I know you were really working on that.
Glad you did ask me.
Okay.
Previously announced, but I'll just repeat. On the sped transportation, we are going to be paying 77% of, of the normal. And on regular transportation, this is for April, May and June, we are actually paying only 45%. So we are saving 55% of the, you know, previously budgeted amount for regular transportation. And that, that is breaking news as of this morning.
That's.
Awesome. Hot off the press. And then that was, was that, that was a joint, from my understanding, the customers really kind of collaborated, correct?
Banded together and approached them as a group. And especially for Maynard, we are the smallest customer.
We leverage that.
Really strengthened numbers. We needed the backup.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so that was, that was.
Do we have a, no pressure, we have an idea of dollars?
Yes, about $45,000. And again, that's roughly, I mean, I'll, I'll give. Roughly $45,000.
Excellent.
The other big note is we are negotiating, I say we again, and this is a lot of districts. Okay, the D bus thing was about 13 districts. This is dozens and could even be 200 districts at some point. It's basically everyone in the state. We are pushing DESC and OSD, Operational Services Division, to do something about these sped tuitions. You know, the out-of-district private school tuitions. There's, there's just no way we should be paying 100% when they are not incurring 100% of their costs in delivering to us. And there is a mechanism and is specifically written in the OSD regulations saying that they are supposed to review when there is substantial change, you know, happening at the schools affecting their costs and thus the rates they are allowed to charge. So we're pushing for that very, very hard. I can't promise, but we're looking at it.
And Irene, just to expand on that, that was the letter that you had circulated. Did that get sent to DESI already? It did. Okay. And can I, I did have a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're cutting in and out, Paula. Did, now, have we received feedback from our out-of-district families about the service levels? And I'm not to, obviously, but I'm just wondering how that, that data piece was collected? Because it seemed.
Well, no, here's, I need to work with Carol on that some more.
Okay.
Carol, Carol would be the one.
To do that outreach.
Right. To, to be doing that along with perhaps sped teen chairs, I'm not sure. It's much about whether or not an individual school is giving us services that we're kind of going to work on that separately. That's a different piece. This is going to OSD and saying, look, you sit down at the beginning of the year and the schools tell you, we need this much money in order to run and provide these services. And we're saying, they're not feeding the kids. So at a minimum, their rates should be reduced to reflect the fact that they're not incurring the cost, you know, for running the cafeteria and feeding the children. That we know that their maintenance costs have gone down, that their utilities costs have gone down. Why are we still giving them a rate based on costs that are no longer being incurred? Now, we, we recognize as with the bus companies, we need to keep them in business. You know, they need to, first of all, they are providing services and we're more than happy to pay for the services we're getting. But there are certain costs that no matter what's happening with services actually being delivered, they're not incurring these costs. Why are we paying for them? So that is kind of the number one crux. Hey, you're the people who set this. You set these rates. You need to adjust the rates for us for April, May and June.
And that basically, to, to clarify, it's DESI who has to do that. It can't be something that, oh, sorry.
OSD, Operational Services Divisions, they are the ones legally setting those rates. DESI is the one that says to us, you've got to, you know,
Follow them.
Schools, right, you know, and get them, the education that's appropriate for them.
Okay. So because OSD sets the rates, Maynard or any districts don't have any leverage to renegotiate or the ability to do that. Okay.
That's why, they really tied our hands. So we said, fine, then, then do your job.
Okay. Alright, thank you for clarifying that. Cause I, I know we didn't really get to talk about it and since you had centered.
And again, that's a huge, that's a huge piece for us.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it would be great to hear, and again, this is more of a Carol piece, the, the feedback from out-of-district families on, on what type of, if they, you know, are getting, feeling that their services are not to the level that they are doing. Just because they are Maynard, they are Maynard students technically.
But that's a whole nother, that's kind of a separate issue. And OSD would not really be directly responsible for that. That's something that we would probably, if we thought a school was really totally falling down, we'd have to go to DESI and say, hey, look, you know, this, this school is, is not, these kids aren't getting.
Not, not delivering.
Right. But Carol, so far, when we first started talking about this a few weeks ago, indicated that while it took a while, kind of like it took us some time to get together, every, we are dealing with has in fact put together a remote learning plan. And several of them had gone ahead and sent her slides and websites and links. And so they, you know, it looks like they are making every effort to deliver what they should be delivering. Now whether or not they're succeeding, again, that's a conversation I need to have with Carol.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I know that CPAC just had a recent meeting. And I know we had not yet received any feedback to that distinction about feeling that families were being failed by their out-of-district services. But obviously, everyone's had their plate full. So I, I think it's a point worth addressing. And I know that we're going to be looking to set up a collaboration meeting to maybe iron some of those pieces out and get a better understanding.
And I have to believe that if there was a school that was totally falling flat, that we have heard about it, that, that the parents would have, I'd like to think anyway, I could be wrong. But I think.
I don't, I don't want to interrupt, but I do want to just say, if there's anything further you want to say on this or anything else related to the budget. Irene, was there something you wanted to finish? I thought you wanted to finish? No? Okay. Anything else on that or any other things budget related at this point in time?
Want to talk about the options that you guys laid out about how the procedures.
Yeah, that's the next agenda item. Yeah.
Alright.
If we're ready to move on to the considerations for the public hearing? Ready to do that? Okay. So thank you again. I apologize. I don't mean to cut people off. Just wanted to try to remind us and consider. So thank you for letting me do that.
One sometimes.
Passionate about our stuff, so.
It's good, it's important to be able to have a space for that conversation. So, good, good. Okay. So next is the budget, public hearing, purpose and structure. So we kind of, I, I did want to, we have set out some options for, as far as the structure piece. I want to get to that in a minute and just do the overview of the public hearing purpose. So I did as part of this, kind of returning to the roots of what we're trying to do with things. Cause I feel like this hasn't always been expressed for everyone to understand as well as they could, both someone that may be trying to participate as a citizen and even for us. So the public hearing that we're going to have, it says a primary focus should be, I got this off, I'll send this website to, forgive me because I found it. It's from the, I, MRC, Local Government Success Services. It's like they support people in local government. So it just laid it out nicely. So that's why I was looking at it. And though, that, one of the things that it said, that it said, the primary focus should be to provide an opportunity for all attending members of the public to speak if they so desire. Time limits can be placed on individual comments, which we've done in the past. If many people intend to testify, and the public comment should be confined to the matter at hand. And in this case, it'd be, it's the, our annual public budget hearing. And then any such ground rules, the content of the hearing should be stated by the chairperson or providing, presiding official at the beginning of the hearing. So as the term suggests, it's meant to be a public hearing for people to be able to state their comments and considerations ahead of any legislative action consideration. So that's, that's what we'd be doing. Cause we were then move into our regular meeting and deliberate in anything further we needed to in relation to budget. And lay out the recommendations that would be going, as we go into town meeting. So that's kind of the, the structure and we can put forth like a document just to lay that out. And then we can state that at the beginning, just to, so everyone's clear. Cause in the past, I feel like there have been times that I've seen that it ended up being more of a conversation and back and forth discussion. And it actually takes away from the opportunity of that space of the public hearing. Unless, and, and this is something that we, I always thought we could even talk about was, unless there's like an immediate, like someone says that there are, says something very, that's actually misinformation around that they don't realize is, is like 20 teachers are going to be considered to be cut, which this is not what's happening. I'm just giving an example. And it's actually like two. So any case, so generally speaking, this was the, these are the guidelines and we can set a few ground rules for people. And we have those from the past to be able to do that and can do that in conjunction with Mary Jane and as for the meeting. So I don't know if anyone has anything like in relation to the larger picture or the ground rules or questions about how, like what the public hearing, it's, and what we're doing in that, what our objective is of that portion.
I think it just, I wonder if we need to have, or if we should have a separate document about the public hearing guidelines? Because they might be different, a little bit more distinct. That I'd like to make sure we, we're calling them out to the public, you know, for instance, if we're going, and some of the procedural pieces. And just some of those ground rules. Cause I think it'll, having that on the agenda, I think, or having, is going to kind of maybe clog it up to maybe have a separate document for that, I think might be helpful. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are on that.
Idea, yep.
And it is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
No, 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 just so people have the outline and the same.
Yeah.
Talking about just the procedure.
Is that something we can address tomorrow in policy subcommittee?
Yeah, I think we could. We can definitely, cause there's some stuff previously. It's something that's more, it ends up being procedure, but we can, we have before in relation to policy. And then move into our, and this is our own procedures. So we can definitely do that and, and then pacify everyone.
Yeah.
We'll be with Mary Jane.
One thing that I, I also, I wonder is that we are planning for, you know, a, a remote public hearing. Do we know for sure that the remote, the ability, the exception to allow remote is going to be extended until that time?
I, I don't see that. I, I can't imagine that they're going to lift the, that, that guideline, to be honest with you, Natasha. Right now, the gatherings are 10. I mean, I don't think they're going to let hundreds of people gather anyway. So I, I think this is going to go on for a while. I don't, I don't anticipate that they're going to allow big groups of people anytime before July, honestly.
The other piece is that the schools are all shut down. So, and they're going to stay closed until the end of school. And we wouldn't be able to have access to WAVM.
Right, right.
Oh, not, I mean, they're going to have, June 13th is going to be town meeting. So, so there are certain things and that's going to be at Fowler.
I just got an, you know, they're, they're considering, you know, Mill and Maine as well.
Right. And I know, I know, not to put anybody on the spot, I know Kat, Esther, Brooke, they were talking. I think they're going to have a separate public hearing potentially or, or public meeting. And I don't know, oh, look there, he's, he's viewable there. I don't know, he may be closer. Cause I know he's been talking, they actually talked about it at their meeting. And I didn't hear all of the contents about the logistical planning about, about this. I don't know if we can have, Ken, maybe Ken can, if he has any more information about the exception? That possible, we can allow him a moment to share if he knows anything.
Well, without objection, which means unless someone says I object, we could allow Ken to speak so that he can speak to the conversation. Okay.
Hi, hi, Ken.
Hi, how are you all?
Hi, thank you. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize.
No, 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 I'm, I'm happy to. So I think it was Mary Jane who said that she'd received something. One of you had said that you'd received something about Mill and Maine being considered. And that's very much being considered. So it may be at Fowler, the decision has not been made. It may be at Fowler, but they are in a conversation with Mill and Maine about possibly holding it there. So that part is true. Did you have other questions about?
I just had a question about the, the extension to have a remote meeting. We're planning our budget hearing for, and, and I know that that's, is that supposed to expire at some point that you know of?
Right. So, so right now, it's supposed to expire at the end of the governor's order. And everybody's expecting that on, when he has his announcement on it before the 18th, that he'll, that he'll address that. We are prepared to have the finance committee public hearings on June 1st and June 8th. They're currently scheduled to be online, but we have backup location to have them over at Fowler. So the, holding public hearings in town hall, there's just not enough room to allow appropriate physical distancing. And so right now, as far as I'm told, is the alternative location is going to be the Fowler Auditorium.
So basically more to come, hopefully Monday, to hear more if it gets extended or not. So to know if we need to, we need to pivot.
Yeah. So of course, obviously with you being on the 28th, you know, we have at least a few extra days. But what we had basically publicized, it was going to continue to be virtual. I mean, I hate to say this, but I think there were some earlier discussions, Mary Jane said this, that her expectation is that we're going to be in this for a long time to come. And I share that expectation. So I'm certainly hoping that we continue to, to be able to have hearings this way. But public hearings, by the way, obviously, you know, are very, are more difficult because the public is supposed to have opportunities to provide their input. So I wish I knew more, I wish I knew more for the FinCom. Certainly wish I could share more with you.
No, thank you very much for, for what you've shared. I know it's, a lot of it's a lot of integral pieces that are unknown yet as well. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks for everything you're doing, Ken.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Ken.
Ken.
Alright, so, so that's kind of, so for now, cause this is what we do. With the information we have, we'll move forward with remote, but it would be good to immediately consider where we would hold this if we were going to be. So, so Mary Jane, maybe that's something that you can see what might make sense? Where we could be if we needed to be? If it turns out that the order is lifted and we would be in person and need to be able to do social distancing.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly take a look at, at Fowler.
Auditorium.
Okay.
I think, I don't, the high school would be conducive to that.
Yeah.
Let me think that, you know, father would be, you know, would be an option. Like I said, I truly doubt that that's going to.
Yeah.
But you know, we can, I can put it in school, dude. But I, I can't imagine that that's going to be lifted in 10, you know, 10 days, honestly.
Right, right. I, I appreciate that. Just that way we're, we're covered, right? So then that leads to, again, assuming for right now, that we're moving forward with a remote meeting. And what has Ken brought up, so that public hearing is, is a very different objective. It's, it is directly meant to be about allowing the public to provide their input and be heard. For where this is our business meeting and there's a portion of it that's set aside for the citizens' comment. So with that in mind, I really was trying to be really thoughtful about how we do this. And Natasha and I have spoken, and I'm sure, I know we've all had different conversations around this as we were like, how do we, how will this happen? So we did put together, Natasha really laid it out on paper and I just tweaked and added one or two things. So thank you to Natasha for doing that.
Can I change, real quick, did you see the email I got from Sarah today?
Oh, yes, I forwarded that along.
Okay.
Thank you. So. Thank you, so we did get legal advice and essentially said, whatever way you do, just choose a way that feels that you're really being clear about it so that people have clear instructions for how they are able to access and provide.
Yeah, and I think that's where we kind of having a separate document, I think, would be helpful. Cause it then, it's, it's not buried within other, other pieces. Which is what Dorothy expressed as well, when we spoke to her about it, it just needs to be very explicit to access on that. And did you want, did you want me to talk about what we kind of just jot it down? Okay, okay, all right. So to the public comment piece, to what we've come to understand is really the part that we need to ensure accessibility for the public in a remote environment, where that could be via phone or via web. So we have to make sure we're accommodating any way someone might be able to access a meeting remotely. And just, I don't know if everyone has had an option or had the opportunity to read the options that were posted in the folder. There was really just two.
Yes, that's number seven, it said public comments for school committee, that's the start of the label for school committee, public hearing.
All right, okay. Um, let's see, is this, I was added at the, this added at the bottom, no, it's not that seven, hold on. Seven here, process, oh, here we go, public comments, okay. So one option that came to mind was that we would continue with the email in advance to the chair. This would ensure the accessibility of those on the phone. But then I think we would need to further indicate that they are public comments and that individuals must include their first, last name and their address, which I think is part of the standard form of when you're speaking at a public hearing. Which right now, we don't explicitly ask for in public comments, but I think it's, it's probably prudent that we look back to that. So that would help ensure accessibility via phone. But they would also have to have web to be able to send an email, so not quite exactly ideal. We could also add the chat option for, which would go to, for everyone. So it'd be accessible to everyone and the chair would be able to read that out loud. It would have to be same thing, include first, last name, address. That is only obviously accessible for those on the web. Also, it would be probably prudent that folks, when they log in on the web, that we ask that then they change their name and, and to better indicate, I know sometimes we get like a letter or two. And I think from the considerations we've heard about safeguards and Zoom bombing, that it, it is helpful that we probably look to expand on that. And I know that it has been in guidance, although we haven't been, and we haven't been taking public comments openly to really need to reinforce that, but it is something we might want to think about. And then this not, still not allowing the voice option, that would ensure safeguards around Zoom bombing consideration. But also, it does feel less, more restrictive for a public hearing opportunity. So again, the pros and cons to all the options. The, the other thing we could do is, the other option was to allow the hand raise, where the chair would be able to address the individual or, or Colleen could unmute the person. They would, same thing, indicate their name and address. And then continue on with allowing the email as well. And then, look like Bethland, you had indicated, oh yeah, that chat email does allow a little bit more for archiving purposes to capture the information, easier to follow up on if, you know, versus written word. So it doesn't sound like, and obviously we're trying to, another note you put in here, equity. It's all about equity, really, you know? How do we ensure that people can be heard on, on the subject matter at hand, which is really important and critical to our process and for the community in, in, in the best way in a safe environment? So that was just kind of a quick brainstorming. I don't know if anyone else really had any other considerations, thoughts, but we haven't heard any other guidance anywhere else. It sounds like a lot of districts are kind of following loose guidelines ad hoc. Some districts are larger and so they have more restrictions. And then, you know, maybe Maynard, the risk is low and we, we could allow, you know, voice, but maybe not video. And, and so, I, I see Irene has a hand there and I know she's a FinCom in a different district. So I don't know if, if she wants to speak from, from that lens. Bethland, do you wanna, is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead, Irene.
I just wanted to add that if you're going to continue to do the email send in, if you're thinking of a time limit, what you might want to do is whoever you think is gonna be reading these, tell yourself, how many words can you read? So that if your time limit is, let's say, three minutes per person, is that 300 words? You know, is that 400 words, what is it? And tell people when they send in their email, that they give a 300-word, it'd be read out loud summary, but they're free to send six pages.
Yeah.
That's you guys, but they are free to send in six pages, but that only, you know, X number of words will be read. Anybody who doesn't do that, tell them, we are simply going to read the first, I'm gonna use 300 words, the first 300 words and stop, because there is a time limit. And in the same way that we would tell you, okay, your time's up, done, we have to do the same thing with something in writing. Cause that, yeah, again, it's the equity thing that you mentioned, Natasha. So I would just say, make sure that you're equitable and people aren't thinking, oh, well, I'm not gonna get completely heard and get to say as much as I want unless I mail it in. So I would just, again, look to that, make sure that you're reading something written. It's as equitable as the person who raises their hand or gets to talk.
So I had a question about the hand raising piece, cause I know one of the other meetings that I've done, there's actually a little link that you can do, cause constantly scroll back and forth and see if somebody's raising their hand is tricky. So do we, do we have that ability or?
Yeah, if you go down, Mary, if you go down below where it says participants, and if you hit that, when that window pops up, there's on the.
Yeah, Bethland's raising her hand, Bethland, hi.
Raise my hand.
Yep.
Perfect, yeah, I didn't realize that we had that, that's good.
Yeah, so you just click that.
Yeah, Mary Jane, see, raise your hand there.
Yeah, I'm lowering my hand now.
So I have a question that, so that means that people that actually call in have, don't have that option?
Right, and that's why we would need to have a comparable option spelled out. That's why it takes some thinking and also making sure we all feel comfortable with it. Because you, again, I think it's very important and serious and we're very committed to people being able to be heard. So that's where Natasha laid out very nicely.
And so like the voice, phone is accessible by everybody, right? That's, that, so if we, if we step back and think of it that way, a phone is accessible by everyone. It's less, we have less ability, when you think about like Zoom bombings and stuff, that, you know, and also the person, it, their, their phone number comes across. So we would really have to be clear on, on how, but they, but the problem is they have no way of notifying like when they want to speak, when you're on the phone. And so if, if everyone's muted, that's the challenge, is that how do we ensure that someone who's on the phone, who just calls in, is have an opportunity to share their feedback, you know, live at the hearing? And so that's where it feels like the email option needs to remain, because that seems to be where they might be able to send an email, I, I don't know. Or we would just, I don't know the right answer, to be honest. But even that, that has to be where they would have to have web to access email, you know? And so that's not really very clear and equitable.
Yeah, so the bottom, what, what it ends up being, and if someone's on the phone, I don't know anyone that's, if you've noticed, but a lot of times it's just the phone number.
Right.
And so another, say you're trying to allow for people the opportunity, if you've let them chat, people that are on the phone, if you're gonna do some, you'd have to go to each phone number, unmute them and say, do you have anything to say? So that's not, I mean, that, that just seems untenable, that's not gonna really work. Cause if there are 10, 12 numbers and you just don't know, like it may be fine.
They have no way to bring awareness to themselves, essentially, and that's, that's what it is.
Right, that's, so that's where potentially having the double, someone could email something ahead of time when they are able to be at a computer. So we could make sure, be clear, like if you're on the phone, we aren't gonna be able to offer comment. There's, if you're only on the phone, there's no way during the meeting live to be able to contribute. So you would need to do that beforehand via.
There is, I, I just went and looked it up, because I'm thinking to myself, there's no way that that's, that there isn't some way of doing that, cause I've, I've been on several meetings with several hundred people. In fact, a couple of them, they've specifically done the phone, because a lot less bandwidth, you know, it makes it easier.
Yeah.
People are still able to, so when you call in, it's not like a regular call, where the only thing showing on your screen is your choice of, you know, mute, unmute, speaker, whatever. It shows up almost like a computer screen. Now, this is again, assuming people are calling in on a smartphone.
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that people are calling in on something other than a smartphone. Now you've probably got a bit more of an issue.
But that's what we're trying to solve for.
That, that is the thing that we're talking about, yes. So on your smartphone, you can have an app, so through Zoom, there's an app that you can have and you can, you can be on, similar to being on the computer.
Except mimics the computer.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I gotta scroll through and see if I find anything else.
Yeah, thank you. So with that in mind, as long as we're clear in the instructions and we're sure that, I feel like having an option, even if you needed to call in, making sure that that person had a pathway, even if it's not immediate during that meeting, to be able to provide a comment, if that's what they'd wanted to do.
Oh, Colleen wants to speak.
Colleen, go. You're muted, oh wait, you can unmute yourself.
Just so you know, it has been advertised as a Zoom meeting in the paper. So A B locked into Zoom, we also may need.
Over the phone is Zoom also.
Correct, yes, definitely, but if you're thinking about a different platform.
Got it.
And we may need someone else to scroll through and click on those raised hands, if I'm taking minutes and we have a large crowd.
Okay, got it. Yep, yep.
Guys, just to clarify, it looks like, and we'll get Adam involved, cause I'm sure, he's, I'm sure can do this a hundred times better than I can. But I just found something on Zoom's page that says, if you're calling in on just a regular phone, you know, not, not a smartphone, you do it by pushing numbers. So people would have to be instructed to raise your hand, press nine. And that's literally what it says right on their page, press nine.
Oh, okay.
That even people calling in from a regular phone, you know, a flip phone or even a house phone, can still do this, okay? But they would, you would need to make sure that you gave instructions, you know, at the beginning or perhaps periodically throughout.
Yeah.
So we're covered on all bases.
So maybe, I wonder if Adam then could, if we check him with Adam and we could come up with something that would allow, cause that, I think that's essentially the idea, is we want to try to make sure we're covering, covering all those, all bases. So someone's able to be on the computer or they're, they could only call in.
And then also, I'm sorry, we could also test it ourselves tomorrow.
Yeah, oh yeah, do a test for sure. I, yeah, cause I think, the part that I just struggled with was just with the email part is that, you know, eventually we're voting right after this, right, the public hearing? And so if people are sending email, you know, and making sure that their feedback may or may not be heard before that vote is just critical. And so if there's an opportunity, we can really explicitly get that instruction, even if they're calling on the phone, I think that would be great.
I think one of the guidelines we need to say too is what Bethland does now, which is to give, you know, a deadline by which we need your emails if we're gonna do it. For instance, if the meeting starts at seven, we need them by 7:30. Or, or, you know, like within a half an hour after our presentation, for instance. So we make sure that we don't miss anybody at the last minute. So, so it sort of sounds like we're threefold. For people that want to be at the meeting, they can raise their hand. People that want to send emails ahead of time, they can do that. And then we'll figure out what to do about people that are on a phone. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think that sounds like it might cover all the bases and we'll have that on a separate document.
And then to give a timeframe by which people have to send in if they're not gonna speak. And the, the last piece, piece which Irene brought up is the 300 words or whatever, whatever it is that's tied.
Yeah, so there's parity with the spoken word, if someone's speaking as opposed to writing.
Yeah, and also just to clarify that, again, distinct that their name, any emails will have to have their, their first name and their address. Just to be consistent and what we're asking in, in every instance, whether they're logging in via Zoom. If they want to, if they have their hand raised, they need to, you know, that's part of participating in the public hearing, is we need to be able to identify who you are as part of the public. So that, that's critical as well.
Okay, cool. Any other considerations? Cause I feel like that gives some good things to go, is to hammer this out and make sure that we all think it looks good.
So we, so with the invitation, is that where we're gonna put this document so that people have it well in advance? I'm thinking especially the people that are on their phone.
I think it only has to be up to, posted with two days ahead of time, with, with the agenda, I mean, with the budget. And that's the other part too, thank you, Colleen. Colleen was able to really, on the homepage, her and Adam worked to have a link on the homepage that goes to the, the finance area, so it has the easy access to the budget and the presentation and information about the posting on the public hearing. But I think that's where we would intend to have it within there, correct, Colleen? I see your head shaking, so, yeah, yeah. And I think that was, that was the other part, when we post, when we posted the hearing, is that they needed to have a link to show where they can access the information related to the budget in the public hearing, without going, you know, 10, 10 clicks in.
Sounds like a plan.
And so it, yeah, planning the, in case, the in case Plan B, in case we, this is not virtual, I guess is the other part that.
Well, if it's not virtual.
So we still should have these same guidelines, cause there'll be people that won't be comfortable being at the meeting.
Yeah, but we don't have, we won't be able to do the Zoom.
We could do email.
Yeah, we do email.
Yep. I'm getting, I'm getting used to figuring that out and trying to make it work and I just take my time, so I'm not missing anything. So, okay, and then I want to, the other thing that came up in relation, is that, is that good as far as consideration on parameters? And we'll see what we can review, okay, cool. Thank you, that's just, it was important. And I was like, kind of stressing about that part, so I appreciate the conversation around that. And then the other thing, Mary Jane and team, will you be prepared to be able to do that, kind of the slideshow recommendations of what you're suggesting for the budget as we move forward and the reallocations, et cetera?
Sure, I mean, we already have all of it done, so it's, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, great.
We just screenshot.
Yeah. Very good, okay, great. Um, anything else in relation to that right now?
I think we're better off than we were 20 minutes ago, so that's great.
Mm-hmm, and it'll be good, I look forward to talking with FinCom on Monday and just carrying their considerations and just having another discussion there as well.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, um, great. So then if we're good with that, then I'm going to move us on, cause of course we're a little over time again. I've kind of been feeling like we've had a lot of different unusual things to discuss on uncharted territories. So we needed to take whatever time we needed to take, so I forgive, I forgive, I ask for forgiveness and understanding from those that are attending as well and apologize that we're off time. So on policy update, we have, I'm gonna hand it over to Lydia because she is our policy star. And so, go Lydia.
Okay, so I hope that all of you were able to read the new I N J D D social media policy that we adopted, well, would like to adopt from the Franklin School District. Are there any comments or concerns about that, that we need to take into consideration at the subcommittee meeting tomorrow when editing the document?
I shared my feedback already with, with the committee. So I just, but although, I don't know, Mary, I can, I don't know if everyone else has seen it, so my feedback. So I don't know if it's important that we go through that together, can we do that? So I don't know if it's important that we go through that together. Can we do that? Okay.
I did have a couple of thoughts and I don't want to reiterate if they're the same.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so I'll go through mine and then maybe, I'm sure there's a lot of redundancy, I'm sure, questions, but. So on page two, employees. Number D or letter D, sorry, letter D, employees will be oriented, just a quick change from May to will. Additional law enforcement officials will be notified if abuse, neglect, or criminal conduct is suspected. I don't think that should be a may be notified.
Well, I think the only reason why it says may is because we can't say that it will happen definitely, because what happens if something, if if we have no idea that it's occurring?
Well, this is talking about, so the employees will be oriented. It says additional law enforcement, well, may be notified if if something is suspected. So someone has to suspect something. And so if something is suspected, I want to make sure it's clarified that we will notify. I think as mandatory reporters and some of the educators are, that that's probably a requirement by law, I would, a distinction. Expectations for personal use of professional social media, A. Let's see. I had comment on the first part, preface the sentence with upon first receiving written approval from the director of IT, school principal and superintendent, and then open up with employees may maintain professional social media accounts. Just making sure that we're doing our due diligence and checks and balances that signs off on that.
Natasha, which one are you on right now?
Um, yeah, section two, A.
Number A.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah. I just thought it before they, you know, it needed to have some due diligence before accounts were created that involved IT so that they were able to kind of understand what platforms are being out there for the district.
Would that be a separate A and then A becomes B?
No, I just thought of preface that that section like add that like a little bit before that sentence. Like upon written approval that employee, you know, whatever that language you want to. Now, letter C, employees shall not use professional social media accounts for any commercial, political, religious activity or for personal gain. I had note that for personal use or gain, I don't, just a reword, a slight reword. There, D, right after that.
Wait.
Employees who may. I sent this to, I sent this to you already, Lydia.
No, I know. I guess I just had a, that's okay, keep going.
Okay, sorry. I don't, yeah, I wasn't thinking you were writing it down. My apologies.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not writing it down. I just, I had a question about whether or not that was the the personal use was already covered in another part of the, you know, the the policy. So I wasn't sure that that was necessary to say for personal or private.
Oh, yeah, it could be.
But anyway.
We can take a look at it if, because we have it here.
Yeah.
You can kind of look and see, and then we'll work on you and we can, you know, when we.
I'm not writing it down, so keep going.
Okay, okay, sorry, yeah. So employees who manage professional social media accounts on behalf of the district or school group must share administrative privileges and passwords. What is noted within the draft is with an administrator slash additional administrator. And then I thought there, I'd like to see with the administ, instead reworded or expand with the administrator, additional administrator, and the director of IT.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
I think Adam or whoever in that role should have access to any social media or any professional accounts that are on behalf of the district.
Yep.
Okay, contact, so section four, contact misses on.
Natasha, before you go on, I have one small change in three B.
Yeah.
That out of school, there's an extra space.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yep, out of school activities, yep. I love Mauro's I there.
The S between the high one and the school, Mauro?
Yes, yes.
Yep. Okay.
Oh, I do, I actually did have one more comment. I didn't even see, I put a comment there. Actually, in C, in that same section. Where it says employees shall not post personnel information or student information, including photographs of students, student work, discussions about students, and then I wanted to add and biographical information. And then, and then or other, so just add that little piece in there, which can be in the form of like dates of birth. And so such and so forth, which are considered high risk information. Contact with students and on social media. This one was a little tricky. Under section A, number one, oh, Irene.
I just.
Yeah, let me just finish this one, Irene. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I'm going to wait till you finish and then I'll tell you what my comment is.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you're saying you don't want them to like follow, you know, whatever on social media. As someone who taught in a CTE marketing class, I'm wondering if there is, if you feel, well, you would ask the people at the high school, do they feel the need to allow for connections on LinkedIn? Because one of the things that I did with seniors was help them establish a LinkedIn page. And of course, one of the things to do is build, you know, the number of followers. And that was always the one platform and the only platform that I would connect with students on.
Okay.
I know that LaBelle has worked on that before. She's working with the students on that. So that's a really good thought.
Okay, so we'll talk about that tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah.
The comment that I had on that piece, it says employees may not friend, follow, like, or use similar method to link themselves to current students or the social media account. I just wanted to reword or expand on that. Under that same section, so number, section, number four. And I, yeah, yeah, just says except in their legal role as a parent guardian of that student. I know we have a lot of, obviously, parents who work in our district who are also have students there and, you know, insulating their parent role. I think I wouldn't want them to feel that they're jeopardizing their job by monitoring their own children in some instance. So that I think would want to make a distinction there or to clarify that. And let's see, number three, contact with parents relating to students' academics or other school-related matters shall be through school sanctioned modes of communication only. I didn't know if we should add except in emergency situations. Thinking right now where where we are with COVID, it just happens to be very timely. You know, what if people need to use their cell phones, their personal cell phones to contact? I don't know if that's considered school sanctioned. Mary, I don't know if Mary Jane might be able to clarify this, but that was, that was just a concern, you know, thinking of what our current environment is. And if there's an emergency, I wouldn't want anyone to feel that they can't, you know, they're breaking school policy because they, you know, are not in that instance, their access to their, using their personal phone is not considered school sanctioned.
Your phone is a social media. It's really about social media. It's not.
Okay.
And it does accept in emergency situations.
Yeah, and number two.
Right.
And number two it did, right. But number three, it didn't. So that's why I thought we could just add that, like, except in emergency situations. Like if humans on, you know, a teacher is watching her Google classroom, you know, I don't know, and you needed to reach out. I just, I don't know. I just want to make sure we're just thinking of all the considerations.
Number three is just about students' academics or school-related matters. I can't imagine that there's going to be an emergency situation regarding that unless they're on a field trip and someone like has their leg cut off or something. Is that what?
For school-related, school-related matters, could be anything. Where there's an emergency, yeah, somebody is hurt, you know, it can be through a school sanctioned modes of communication. So I don't know what that's defined as, school sanctioned modes of communication.
Well, aren't, isn't calling them on the phone school sanctioned already? I mean.
I don't, I don't know if it's using their cellphone, like their personal phone, if that's considered allowable or not.
All right, so we'll look into that.
Lydia, there's an extra space in that school sanctioned in that section right there.
I see that. And I just want you to know, I didn't type this.
Yeah, and I see if I can any.
I had one in number four also, whenever.
Okay, yeah, jump, yeah, go ahead, add.
So a number, let's see, four. Four B two. It said employees shall not give their private cellphone or home phone to students without the prior approval of the principal or district. Shouldn't, that should be, they should never give their private number to anybody, right? So I was thinking we should scratch that without prior approval of the principal or district. Why, why would an employee ever call one of their students on their personal phones?
I don't know if Mary Jane can speak to situations that examples, would that would be necessary?
No, you can certainly, I, I don't think, you know, that's, it's totally up to you. I guess to me, that would be acceptable use instead of social media. And that would be a different category because, you know, for you know, I don't think that's social media. I think to me that would be more like, you know, we're asking communication needs to be through school. I don't know, I guess I'm trying to figure out, because to me.
Well, like if someone's tutoring after school, you know, and someone has a cellphone.
Well, I think about like if there's a student run event and there's a teacher that's going to show up and there's something.
A mentoring.
They, they might cellphone to cellphone text or something, be able to, yeah, whatever.
I mean, you can certainly put in there, no teacher's personal use to the students, I, you know, do not pass out your.
Maybe that's the way to word it, just.
Yeah.
I also wonder, are there any situations where teachers might, like for at-risk students? Where, and I don't know, but maybe they do have, I guess a teacher in the classroom might be considered like a lifeline where.
I was thinking of that too, but I think that runs into inappropriate territory. Irene, what were you saying?
Thank you.
If anyone was familiar with Remind, that was what we used at Durfee. As the DECA advisor, I would sometimes be traveling with the students. And I needed a way to reach them all on cellphone, but I didn't want to be giving them my personal cellphone number and I didn't want their personal cellphone numbers. So by setting up a Remind, I was able to contact them either as a group or individually. But it was almost like sending an email, except that I was doing it on the phone through Remind. I still did not know their personal number. They still did not know mine. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there, may or may not, you don't want to limit yourself in apps. But there is a way to use cell phones without crossing that line.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, because I also thinking about, there might be instances where teachers, I mean, like, I'm thinking just neighbors or Maynard Small Town where you have who bring drop like carpooling. I don't know if that exists. Where that might be something, I don't know. I'm, I have no idea what the need is. I do think that it definitely would need to, I was thinking it needed to be principal or superintendent approval. Because I agree, Mary, Mary Bradley, it was really a little uneasy for me to think about, but I don't know all the implications where that might be currently being needed.
I don't certainly encourage any parents to call the teachers or, you know, texting. I, you know, I don't, I don't recommend that, putting that out. I, I never would ask a teacher to call somebody from their own personal phone.
Yeah.
But I mean, I guess in an emergency, I mean, everything, you can't, you can't cover everything, Natasha, but it's, you know, I don't, I don't recommend that.
Yep.
Anyway.
Because we've also had instances of parents being contacted and intimidated, and that's not okay either. And we need to not allow that to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think people should use personal.
Yep. Okay, any others?
I don't know if everyone else has, I had like two more.
Okay.
So page four D, privacy of online content. Oh, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Okay. D, yeah, yeah, sorry. I thought I was going to freeze for a moment. I don't know if I froze or. Just to reword where it says district administrator, just to reword that to superintendent on D.
Yep.
And let's see this. Oh, here, E right after it. So the last sentence in E, employees should have no expectation of privacy with respect to electronic devices or digital media used, it says right now in school or for school activities. I wonder if we can expand and say used in school on district's network or for school activities, because I think anything in our network should be something that we should be able to access at any point. And if people are using the school network for personal, like their phone, whatever, I don't think we should be limited by.
That is probably something that we're going to have to run by legal, because that is extending our access, which we may not have a right to.
On our network?
Yeah, yeah, that might be encroaching on on individual.
That'd be good.
But we can ask.
Okay.
Yeah, this document, go by, it's after you make your changes, we'll talk to the policy tomorrow, run it by legal and obviously it has to be vetted through the NBA as well. So, so, you know, it's going to have a little bit more process to go.
Yeah, and just the last thing where we're citing at the bottom, we're citing cross references. We don't have all of those policies there and so, correct?
No, well, yeah, we do, because we broadly adopted all of masks policies. What I have to double check and haven't yet is whether or not we have comparable policies already in place that would usurp these. And if we don't have policies already in place, then these are already adopted.
Okay, so these are not, these are Frank, I thought these were Franklin's.
Not the INJDB or JRA or JRA dash R.
JT.
Yeah, that's all. That's all in the general mask policy.
Don't some of the districts, they're reword their policies a little bit?
Yep, sometimes.
Yeah, but we, we adopted what there were, what's, we, I think that's one of the things she would, you could double check, Lydia, and make sure that these are, these masks. The.
The mask ones.
Mask one, which, yeah, yeah, we can check.
Again, it's a step in progress and I haven't got to that part yet.
Yeah, they would be. If it says those documents, it would be the ones that we've adopted through mask. It wouldn't be the ones at Franklin.
Right.
Right, so.
Hold on, I'll check that. Okay.
So, so I've got a general question.
Sure.
We, we talk about the first line of the, I guess, the two pager. It says superintendent, school principals will annually remind staff members and orient new staff members concerning the importance of maintaining property of current blah blah. Do we, should we put in place, I guess this is a question for you, Mary Jane or Jennifer, or I don't know. I know with the students, when they get a handbook at the beginning of the year, they're asked to sign off on it. Do we have, this would be a policy that I would like to see signed off on by the staff.
Agreed, just like sexual harassment.
Exactly, just to have, have them have to sign to say that, I mean, and I see us putting together just the most pertinent ones, obviously not the whole binder. But this, you're right, just to have a few of them that we have them sign off and say that they've read them so that they can't come back to us and say, I didn't know. But this, you're right, just to have a few of them, that we have them sign off and say that they've read them, so that they can't come back to us and say, I didn't know.
Exactly.
I agree.
Yep. It would, it would definitely go into the staff handbook again, once the MEA takes a look at it, and then, you know, they agree to, it would be part of the staff handbook.
Okay, and do they have to sign off on that?
Um, that's a good question, I know they have to sign off on specific, like, like Lydia said. Sexual harassment and, and, and. Beginning of the year protocol, but we can certainly add that, yeah, I would think they have to acceptable use protocols, I believe so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
I didn't know that, yeah, so that's good that they do have to sign off on it.
Hi, this is Jennifer, I just want to explain, sorry.
Before. Go ahead, Jennifer, and then Irene.
Lower my hand, so what we do every year is we have compliance training that the staff has to go through with a PowerPoint that includes sexual harassment, students with disability, privacy, and a variety of, a host of other policies, and they submit a survey, Google survey that indicates that they have read and understand each of those pieces, so we can add it to that piece.
Perfect, thanks Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Irene?
I was just gonna add that as a teacher, I have had to sign acceptable use policies myself.
Okay.
Not unusual, and they are a specific, separate thing that you sign.
Yep. Yep. Okay, great.
Thanks for finding this, and thank Adam too, this is a very great.
Yeah, well, this was all Adam, so.
Very robust document that, it sounds like we're lagging behind comparatively to other districts in implementing.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Alrighty then, so are we good with those and, and policy subcommittee, we can add those edits and then discuss next steps tomorrow?
Sound good, everyone?
It sounds good to me, you guys, you guys are in the meeting, so, I think so.
Okay.
Just want to ensure there aren't any other thoughts or comments before. Okay.
Alrighty. So next is BEDH and BEDH dash E, I don't know if you guys have read this yet, but these are the new policies that were instituted and adopted by MASK at the end of last year due to the ruling, and I can't remember which district it was, where it, it had to do with the right for, the right of the public to comment and us not being able to shut them down. Bethland, did you wanna?
Nada.
Newton, I think it was Newton.
No, I think it was Nada.
It was Nada, yeah.
It was Nada.
Alright.
So these aren't on the agenda though, so.
Yeah.
Oh, alright, so are we not doing, because I, they were supposed to be, alright.
Yeah, I, I think without objection, we can, if there was, we can review them, I think it's within our interest to do so, even though we weren't able to put them on the agenda. This is just a first reading of these, is that correct, Fabia?
Correct.
So with that.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I can understand if you don't feel prepared for it in a time, I totally appreciate that. So, maybe what we do as part of the first reading is like, Lydia just explains the context of these. And then, when we go to the sec, then people sit with them, and then when we go to the, the second reading, you can.
Can I clarify something, though?
Bring up any questions. Yeah, please do.
So we did actually review BEDH on the 5th of March. And there were some questions as to whether or not we already had conflicting policies regarding public comment. And we have gone through and we found, I can't remember, I think it was 707, or, or something. And that was really more of a procedure than it was a policy. And so, this technically is a second reading, but again, if it's, if it's, I wanted to introduce it again as a first reading in conjunction with BEDH dash E. But we do, I felt that we needed to get this on the books prior to our budget hearing. But we can, I guess, adopt it on, at our next meeting. If that's what people want to do.
Lydia, the only thing that, the only thing that I noticed between the two is that one says that the public comment is 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Then this BEDHE says 20 minutes.
Yep, yep, so that's something that I guess we as a group would have to decide how long we're going to. Yeah, and I don't understand, I saw that too, and I don't understand what the discrepancy is. So, do we want to change that right now, or discuss it in policy tomorrow?
I, I'm okay with looking at it tomorrow.
Okay. Um, and then, so do you even want me to address the other three, or no?
I'd rather be able to take another look at them, if that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know why they didn't end up on the agenda.
I, I think the agenda was already posted, Lydia, when you asked me to, I assume when you're talking, that you want to look at those agendas, I assumed it was for the policy subcommittee meeting, so that was my apology.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if they were, yeah, so, my apologies too, for no.
Because it was in the folder, I had the agenda and, and, and the policies in the folder, prior to the agenda being posted.
Oh, sorry about that, I didn't notice that.
That's alright, no worries. It's just, one of them is the display banners at Alumni Field, and I know that we wanted to get working on that as well, so we'll postpone that to next time.
No, we had talked, I, I tentatively have, that we have a meeting next Thursday, the 21st. I guess we can talk about that later, because if we decide that we want to do that for different reasons, then we could potentially do it then. Just throwing that out there.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Again, just to say. Okay. Just to say. Can you guys hear me, because my internet connection is on.
I, I just want to actually clarify too, I think, yeah.
You can hear me.
Yeah, the, the agenda was posted on Monday, which is normally a day was. Hello?
Yeah, yep.
You're frozen, but we can hear you, go ahead, Natasha.
Hello?
Oops, you're now, okay.
Okay, no, I was just saying, I was just looking back to see.
Go ahead, Natasha.
Hello, can you hear me now? Okay, no, just looking to see, and I think that the agenda, I know got posted on Monday this week. Which may have been the cross. Alright. Uh-oh. Am I having a Lydia moment?
Yep.
Lydia, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. No, because everything froze, and I, you were the only one who was moving on my screen, so I was like, I felt like the Twilight Zone, a bit. And if I was frozen, everyone else was, so, alright, anyway, no, I just wanted to say, I think that, yeah.
If folks shut their videos off, it'll improve the connectivity.
I think I'm gonna have to do that.
So if we do shut videos off, then we, it's, we need to be a little more cognizant of when we're speaking. Because it's harder to see, so raising hands for when you want to speak would be a little more important. So, the one thing I would say, and we can do this however you want to, but with the first reading, my understanding of first reading in the past have been you're really introducing something, so it doesn't necessarily mean that people need to comment on it tonight. It's an introduction and a first reading for you to then review, so it gives like Lydia an opportunity to introduce it and explain it and walk you through it. And as, and then for you to go back, and then, in the second reading, that's when if there's anything else you wanted to say about it, or then we, we would then return to the policy subcommittee, but I, I hate.
Next reading is when we vote.
Say it again.
You can have a third reading if you wanted to, you don't necessarily need to have two readings.
Oh, okay.
So my, my thing is, so what it does offer the opportunity is if, if we, if we skipped doing that first reading tonight, and then it turns out people like, this is perfect, there's nothing wrong with it. So then we go to the second reading, and it's fine, or there's very minimal changes, and we're able to abode on it with those minimal changes. We're now a step ahead, as opposed to a step behind if we skipped that tonight, and that, you know, that, that's, that's my one consideration, knowing that we have a lot of policies to try to get through. And that we feel like we put forth the ones at the top that are the priority, and that we felt like were more time sensitive, so.
Okay.
So if, if folks are okay with, with continuing with that first reading and not feeling the pressure to have to comment now, but just hear and see what they are with Lydia, then, and obviously, we had looked at this at the last subcommittee meeting somewhere too, but she's really been leading the charge and holding the space for these, and making sure they're all getting organized and whatever. Is that okay with you, because Natasha, I'm, I'm well aware, I don't want you to feel like you're not prepared, or anyone else either. But just to be able to introduce them, and then we consider that at the second reading, and you have already had a framework in your minds, and then if we need to move on to a third reading, absolutely do.
Yeah, I, I want to also be thinking about, which ones are we looking to do a first reading on, maybe we can clarify that. Because there's quite a few in the, in the ones to review, and I also don't know if we allocated this much time for them, because I think it was only indicated as one on the agenda.
Yeah, so, and the May, it says 51420 Policies for Review. That's in the Policies for Review folder.
All of those are first reading?
No, so if you open the, if you open up that document, then you see the ones.
Oh, I see, at the bottom, sorry, sorry, yeah.
No, 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 KJ, KHB, those are first readings.
The one that I would like to, that I would most like to get initial feedback on is KHB dash A, Display of Banners at Alumni Field. That's the one that replaces 707, and, or it, it it expands upon 707, and it's in us trying to consider ways of allowing commercial advertisements.
I had a question about that, Lydia, and that's mainly, that's only at Alumni, that doesn't, that doesn't talk about any kind of advertising at Fowler, which I think was one of the main things that the Maynard Rec and the soccer group, I'm blanking, sorry, would like, is at Fowler, not at Alumni.
The building?
No, at the, at the Fowler Field.
Right, so, like, that would have to be a separate, because this is really talking about who can buy, because, well, I mean, yes, we could incorporate in here. I was just tackling Alumni Field first, because there is a fence, I don't know where we would put the signs at Fowler Field.
Well, there's going to be a fence.
Oh, there is, okay. Well, then, I can, I can reword this to include both the Fowler Field and Alumni Field.
Great.
So what are you hoping in relation to this, or you're hoping that we can take, we can, what are you hoping for, Lydia?
So just the things that I, that I added, like the rental rate for commercially leased space shall be blank per square foot. I want us to start thinking about what we think is reasonable, or, or who we go to to determine what is reasonable for that. And what the size of the sign should be, what we're comfortable with, they can't be too small, or people can't see them, and they can't be too large, because then the weight of the sign could potentially pull the fence down. We need to determine who's gonna be doing the installation and removal, so that we don't damage the fence, and so that it's done in a timely manner, yeah?
I have a question that may be totally out of left field, but thinking about our conversations that we're having parallel with the ongoing about ownership of different areas, if the fields are gonna be maintained by the town, how does that factor in if we're creating a policy, shouldn't that be that they would need a permission from the town then?
That's a good question. If the fields are town property, then yes, we absolutely would.
No, they're school property.
But they're school, so I'm talking about the school property fields, I'm not talking about.
But they're gonna be maintained by the, by the town.
Right.
Right, so I just, I just want, I don't, again, I don't know how it fits into the puzzle, but I, I think that it might be something we need to, if we're not gonna be maintaining them, it'll be the town, how does that work, if this is, we're talking about installation and all of that, I don't think.
Do you mean they're, they'll be maintaining the fence as well, because my understanding.
I, I don't know.
They were just gonna be manicuring the fields.
Maintaining is how it's defined.
Well, then we need to clarify what maintain is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, I think the, the question, I mean, we already have this policy for Alumni Field, at least for the, the outside part, where they are able to do signs from nonprofit organizations. And how do we, we deal with that, I think that those are being, are put up by those groups, and when it's over, they take them down. And they, but they need to get the superintendent's permission to do that.
Right, and it, they still, any commercial banner, the company would have to get permission from the superintendent or the superintendent's designee as the approving authority.
Right, so, so what I'm thinking, let's just give an example of that the, you know, Maynard, Maynard Youth Soccer has solicited, you know, five Maynard companies to have, you know, buy advertising. And they purchase the signs, and that then the Maynard Youth Soccer actually puts them up. And when they are no longer needed, then they'll take them down, or they'll switch them out to a new advertiser.
Okay.
I think the interest is gonna be in, in their club too, because the, you know, to take them, put them up and take them down. I know in other towns, they, you know, you buy a certain amount of time for your banner, but you're right, the, you know, in this case, the Fowler Soccer, you know, the soccer parents, whatever. It's in their interest to put it up, and to keep it up for the amount of time that the people have paid for, take it down and get the permission and put up the new one. So, I think to, to put the responsibility on them versus us, you know, anywhere around the schools to, to be responsible for it, would be where we want to go.
Okay, so in that case, it does state that any club putting the banners up, they need to have adequate liability insurance in case something were to happen to the fence, right? Because they would be responsible for the damage, and therefore they would have to pay for fixing it. So that's, that was just one of the reasons why we consider who we were gonna have installing and taking down. Okay. Again, none of this is, we're not making any decisions, I just am getting feedback. So the, for the Maynard based nonprofit organizations, I basically just took that, and it's defined as regional, state, national, and international nonprofit organizations with Maynard chapters and federal, state, and local government agencies. So for the businesses, I said Maynard based businesses, and regional, state, and national businesses with a Maynard branch or storefront. Does that sound A, acceptable, B, broad enough, too broad?
So, I remember the last time we had this conversation years ago, we were struck with, like, for instance, the Rod and Gun Club, you know, that's guns. And where do we stand with those? A brewery that is having to do with alcohol, so it's like we're advertising alcohol, so we, I think we have to be careful.
Well, that, but those, those are in there.
Yeah, in the next, in the next one.
Right.
Alright, okay. Yes, no, this is just, is it okay that I have just restricted it to mostly Maynard based businesses or businesses that have. or businesses that have storefronts in Maynard? Do we want to, I mean, like, we don't have a Shaw's in Maynard. If Shaw's wanted to put up a sign, are we going to allow Shaw's to do that? Should I, should I broaden the spectrum?
Why not? Well, I mean, we do get a lot of, I mean, if I just use the taste as an example, we get, you know, businesses from all over to, all over the area to come to the taste and, you know.
That's why we changed the name so that we can get restaurants from outside of Maynard. So yeah.
So maybe we do want to broaden it.
And, and sometimes the competition is a good thing. Like if we have a restaurant that is advertising from outside of Maynard, maybe that'll encourage restaurants inside of Maynard to advertise also.
Okay. And then underneath, the next one is no banners shall promote alcohol, tobacco, pharmaceuticals, supplements, or weapons of any kind. However, a banner will not automatically be rejected on the basis the organization or location of the event supports or sells any of those items. It will be up to the discretion of the superintendent or his/her designee whether a banner that mentions those items will be acceptable. So like you said, for the Rod and Gun Club, if they're sponsoring or if they're holding Casino Night, right? Like we will allow a banner that says at Casino Night. But if it's, you know.
A gun show.
Or come get a flight of beers at Amory's Tomb, then, you know, no, right? But the only thing is, is I'm worried about how subjective that might be and whether or not we need to make it a little more specific.
It seems as though, again, from past history and ones that I've seen in other towns, it, it's more companies that advertise generically, not for an event.
Okay.
So, cause if they're paying, again, they're almost paying for a membership for a certain amount of time. So they want their name up there for like the whole season, for instance.
Okay.
So.
It could potentially be different depending on what is offering, like how you're paying, right? So someone might be able to get like a 30 day or whatever. And maybe that would be for an event versus something that may be more seasonal, like you're talking about, and that might be in longer term.
Yep.
I guess it depends on the tiers of what, what we're collecting revenue for or how this revenue would be collected.
Right. And that's, that's the other thing is determining time limits. I mean, if one season is longer than another season, is it fair that we charge the same amount for the banners that are only up for four months versus the ones that are up for five? So there's, there are a lot of intricate details that need to be taken into account. So this is going to take several passes. I have tried to find similar policies. I haven't been successful yet. If anyone knows of any in other districts, that would be super awesome. But.
Thanks for your work on this, Lydia. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And I think to your last point, I think it'll be important to clarify the timeframes. I, I think that when it gets to, you know, loosey goosey, then you run into issue of it, it not really being a successful policy. And, and I think we want to, all the work you're putting into it, I think it, having parameters would be helpful at the onset. And if there's reason to find later on that it's helpful otherwise, then we can always be amended.
Yep.
Lydia, is there anything that you immediately need to review further right now? Cause I know there's a.
There's just one more sentence that I wanted to check the warning on and see if. Banners must be sufficiently secured to the fence so as not to cause damage to the fence itself, harm passersby, or become unsightly from deterioration due to high winds or extreme weather. Is there anything else in that that? Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. All right. We can continue this tomorrow.
Yes, we will. Okay. So we, we have a few items left here. So FinCom joint meeting prep is next on the list. I'm going to see what we can do. I just want everyone to have in mind. As we've had, obviously there's a lot of various issues to talk through at this point in time. So just as we look at the rest of the agenda, anything that we can go shorter on? I'm starting to lose steam myself. So forgive me. So FinCom joint meeting prep. So for that, I just wanted to mention that Ken was graciously in conversation with us. And some of the things that we're, wanted particularly to talk about were, they're just always interested in hearing about our perspective on financial resources needed to support the educational needs of the town's children. And obviously within the context of COVID-19, where things stand. And that's just good to have a shared discussion around that. And then the GM school roof, the proposed new GM school and working with MSBA. And so, and then one of the things that Ken mentioned in this email, I don't know if it's changed since then. This was two days ago. That current one possibility right now, the current thinking, which again is a caveat that it could change, was revisiting the town operating budget passed in June, in June and has a final budget at the October 5th. Special town meeting. So, and then anything we can anticipate or consider? And if that situation were to occur. So those were the things he was considering. I don't know if there's anything else anyone wants to mention ahead of that meeting, but I wanted to just kind of have us, have a consideration around that and see from Mary Jane's perspective, who would be there from her team. That's kind of it. And then Ken is here too, if we have anything. And he's, he was in anticipation. He is now back on video.
Yeah. I think he's muted in case. I don't know.
Yeah, he's muted right now. Ken, would you like to say something else about what we're looking at?
No, all this policy discussion reminds me of my school committee days.
Glad we can bring you back.
So, so the, so what Beth Lynn wrote is, I think really, we're just trying to sort of get prepared. Make sure we're in good communication with you all about the issues. You know, obviously the school, the, in school budget is incredibly important part of the town budget. It's a big part of the budget, but it's also a very important part of the budget, given that its purpose is to educate the, the children of our town. And so, you know, being synced up with your thinking is very important. Understanding the issues that you're struggling, although I do try to attend many of the school committee meetings. I can't attend them all, so it's, it's good to catch up with you all on that. The Green Meadow Roof is, is one of the things, obviously it's a, partially being paid for out of debt exclusion, partially out of free cash. So having that go forward is important. And then also understanding sort of the, where the status of the MSBA discussions towards a new Green Meadow School. That's one of many, many big projects that the town has on its plate. And so, you know, understanding your all's perspectives on that is very important. So I, you know, earlier was mentioned that the feeling is that, you know, the town budget that we pass on June 13th, assuming that we have the, the town meeting on that date, and that's, that's currently what we're planning on. That's the budget that will take us into the, the, the new fiscal year. But we're going to be revisiting that in October, almost certainly, once a picture about state aid, state and local aid and town revenues and stuff comes in. And so again, just, you know, making sure that we're in sync with you all, understanding, you know, what's on your, your minds and stuff like that. That's the important part. So if, if, it would be good to know who's, you know, who's going to be there. And that way, you know, I can let the finance committee know. And, you know, we can be prepared with our questions and prepared to answer yours.
Great. So I believe all of the school committee members are anticipating being there. And then Mary Jane.
I'll definitely go there.
Yep, me too.
Great. Thanks Irene. And then Lydia's gonna, you see her dog is gonna attend as well.
Dakota, Dakota will be there.
Do you know whether or not Brian will be able to go?
I'm sorry.
Brian has.
Oh.
I can ask him right now. I'll ask him.
Thanks, Mary Jane.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else in consideration of that meeting?
I just wanted to clarify that the, and Ken, this is just for the public awareness. This is just an exercise, a healthy exercise that we, we should, we should be doing annually. I understand it's been happening more recently, but I just wanted to get your take on the expectation for a public awareness that this is, should be part of our ongoing collaborative process. Is that correct?
Oh yeah. So, you know, each, each year, as far as I'm aware, you know, we have a discussion usually, you know, very specifically targeted around the, the budget. But, you know, my sense is over the past few years, we've been trying all three boards, the school committee and the finance committee and the board of selectmen, as well as the town administration, the MPS administration, to make sure that we're having open communications, understanding that, that way, you know, we're in a better position to make sure the town resources are, are, that we understand how best to use the, the town's not unlimited resources. So yes, and Natasha is absolutely right. You know, we look at this as an ongoing discussion. It's certainly not the only one we'll have this year. The budget subcommittee continues to meet and feedback to the three boards and committees. So, so absolutely. And, and I guess I would note that this is our last meeting before we have our, our public hearing on June 1st on the warrant articles. And then the week after that, on June 8th, a mere five days before town meeting to meet on, do our public hearing on the town budget. So.
Um, Brian will be able to make it. He will be there.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you.
Great.
We'll make sure there are seats for everybody.
Oh, please. Oh, smarty pants.
Thank you. We appreciate the.
Thank you for your hospitality, Ken.
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna end it there. I'm just, I'm finding out of things. I don't have more things in here. All right. And thank you. I like that collaboration is very important across the town. And appreciate it's not always easy conversations, but they're important. So, thank you. All right. And so now we're going to move into this one. Let's just get this out of the way quickly. Consideration to points, school community zones, to be with some FinCom meetings. People have been going anyways. And it's just occurred that whenever there's something related to school committee on the agenda. So I just, there's been very considerations, but Natasha's taking the practice of when she's gone, she's taking little notes. And not that that's any expectation of anyone, but just that if people are going, it's nice to have that loop closed. We do have Justine who, from the board of selectmen, is Leah's on here. Ken, obviously also is a big fan of attending our meetings. And so I don't know if we'd wanted to say, hey Natasha, if you're going, great. And between you and Lydia, you've also often been there attending a BOSS and FinCom meeting when there's an item that's relevant.
I have. You want to? I, I keep forgetting about FinCom. Sorry. But I have been going to the BOSS.
Fair enough.
Mondays are bad days.
So we had someone then, or if we know there's someone that's generally going to go, if they can't, they could put a shout out to others, to the rest of the committee and just say, so I just thought we could close that loop.
And like.
I think it's.
Earlier in the day would be great too, rather than, because I know once in a while we'll get one like an hour ahead of time or something to say, you know, I'm going to make it. But yeah, if you're not going to make it, that, just so that we make sure that somebody's there would be great. I have to say, I did try, I think it was the FinCom meeting.
You did the other day. I know you had trouble getting in.
Get on. Yeah. I got on at nine o'clock and I'm like, cause that's when I could. And I was like, they're already done?
It was, it was actually the one time, like the, a few, it ended by nine. I think all the other meetings had been like three hours, four hours. So yeah, you caught the short one by chance. So do we, maybe it's helpful that instead, because I think, I think it is important. I mean, there's obviously so much happening right now. And for me, I gather a lot just hearing the tone and the discussion that is happening and kind of helps with my, my decision-making or understanding as, as we are all. Trying to be town leaders in that sense and try to be as in sync as possible. I, I do think it's important for us to somehow make sure that we're bridging those pieces and we're not working in our own silos. So I'm happy to go to whichever ones. I know Monday, I, their, their schedules also have, right now are a little bit in flux as well. So what I can probably do is add the remaining to the, the calendar for the school committee. And that might be helpful for us to bring awareness to when they are. And then after that, we can maybe decide on who's able to go, because obviously everyone's needs fluctuate potentially. And so.
Helpful. Yeah. To know if we had a schedule of, of what they are, then we could write them down and actually.
Yeah. I'll, I'll put it on the school committee calendar. I'll just add, I'll add links there. So.
Great. So that, that was all I wanted to do with that, to kind of cover that. Unless there's anything else immediately, I thought we could just move on and get that one done with really quick.
Done. We're, move on.
Cool. Okay. Increased federal support and stimulus funding, K through 12 correspondence. And who's that go to? Irene?
Lydia. Lydia, I think added this.
My document. I, I'm searching for it.
Do you want to, do you, is it something that's time sensitive or are we?
No, it's not time sensitive at all. I mean, it goes back to, I mean, Natasha, you probably got a copy of the one that the Boston.
Yeah, yeah. And, and National School Board place.
Oh, I remember this now. Sorry.
Yeah. That they're, they're sending this letter asking for additional federal funding and support for public schools. And they encourage each district to customize it to their own personal situation and forward it to your representatives and senators and that sort of thing. So, but.
Absolutely.
There, there are several points of data that I need to get from Irene before this is even close to being ready to send off. So I just wanted to know if you guys were, wanted to do it. And if so, I will pursue it. If you had no interest, I wasn't going to waste my time.
Absolutely.
I think if anything that helps the, the community, I think is worth, worth exploring. Maybe when you get information from Irene, you can forward over the draft and then we can have a peek at it. Cool.
Yeah. Lydia, just give me an email. Let me know what you want.
I will. Thank you.
Irene, thank you very much.
And thanks for bringing it forward, Lydia.
Yep.
All right. Can we be done with that one?
You're welcome.
Can we be done with that one?
Oh yeah, we're totally done.
Excellent. Good work, people. Okay. So next is summer program, if I can say it, we can do it. Summer programming considerations.
You can do it.
And that one, we also have, I believe we have something in the folder to consider.
There's a couple.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's in, it's a, it's a slot, it's a, like a Excel sheet, Google sheet.
Saw that. Is it just, wait, is it just the one thing, right? Just the one Excel sheet? Okay. Or the Google sheet, whatever.
Really it is. It's talking about, you know, what it's going to look like in the summer. We really don't have information right now. So I guess I was just letting you know that, you know, these are the, the activities that we know participate in the summer. So our basketball league, the, our soccer summer camp, youth football, music camp, and the national aviation graduation. You know, I just. You know, I just, the Boys and Girls Club is not running any summer programs this summer. And we're not sure about our extended year program, although we are hearing that they're probably gonna be distance. And the Excel, I know Lois was on earlier, I don't know if she still is, but you know, I know when I talked to her earlier, she really didn't see that it was gonna open up in time, so I just wanted to let you know that at this point, we are not planning to allow anybody to have a summer program at this point, because we don't know what school's gonna look like, and you know, as far as cleaning, after all these people, it's gonna be an issue, so I just want to let you know that that's not something I'm recommending.
Yeah, that was my comment.
Okay, so.
Was because.
Mary, and then Natasha, go ahead Mary.
Sorry, no, the summer basketball league especially, because they're gonna be inside, and my question was, are we charging them more because we have to do more cleanup after they leave? So, but you just answered that by saying they're probably not even gonna do it.
Yeah, I'm not interested really in opening it up for people. We have to worry about the fall for the school, I can't be worrying about summer programs and cleaning it.
Yeah.
So, so basically, so I just wanna make sure here, because I know this is probably the first time where public has had some awareness of this. And so what you're, what you're saying is that Excel camp is not gonna happen this summer.
I, I don't, I don't have guidance on that now. If anything, I would probably, you know, talk to Lois a little bit, but early on, she didn't see it happening. I haven't actually had a conversation with her in the last couple of weeks, but I will probably get back to her on that one, but to me, that would probably be the bed and Excel are the only two things that if we had to, those are what we would open up for. The college gate said they are not running their program this year.
Right, they canceled.
Correct. So the, you know, the only other ones are optional for, for the town, so I'm really hesitant to move forward with those two. As I said, the only two I would be interested in moving forward with would be the extended school year program and Excel, but everything else I would be no.
Yeah, I think that the, whatever way we can try to support our Maynard students by need, I mean, the Excel program, first of all, the extended school year, I mean, is, I think, in some form for special ed, so I mean, if there's, again, it doesn't sound like you have guidance on how that could even be done in a remote environment potentially, if that's what it is, right? And the Excel program is, you know, primarily Maynard families that I'm just thinking if there's people going back to work, and I don't know, also, just to add, and I'm not really sure, you know, if Green Meadow is at some point offline, you know, with kindergarten and, and all that because of the roof at some point, you know, how does that factor in here as well?
Right, like I said, those are the only two that would even remote, and I can revisit that for, you know, before the 28th meeting, so I can, I can get back to on those particular those two, we may have guidance on those. I'm hoping we will, but definitely, like I said, bottom four, I'm definitely, you know, the, after you know, the town ones are the ones that I'm really not game to opening the school for. The other two, absolutely. If, you know, if we can get it to work, then I have no problem with that, but the other ones, no.
And so just to clarify, like for the public, so it's called, talking about the summer basketball league, soccer camp, youth football, Assabut Valley Music Camp, and Aviation Academy Graduation, and the Boys and Girls Club is not running, but those are the ones we're saying you would not support having at, at the district, but potentially we, not offline is the extended summer program and Excel.
Correct.
Okay.
I've had at least one year where we had the Excel program at the middle school.
And.
Last year.
That was last year.
We did talk about that.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, it just requires, I think, you know, obviously planning, more planning on top of everything else that's happening to, to make that happen.
Yeah.
So, alright, yeah, so should we Bethlin?
I have to vote, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, yeah. On the 28th, we can, we can come back to this and revisit, Mary Jane?
Yeah, I'll have, you'll have more guidance on those.
Yeah, that'd be good. Great.
Yeah, I'm not sure if people are gonna wanna let their kids go back anyway, so that's the other issue.
Right, what's the appetite, the community appetite?
Good question.
Has, would it be helpful if maybe, and I don't know, to do like a survey for Excel families or families that have done it, to see if the potential even exists, would they be interested in pursuing? Because it does require, I mean, I'm thinking about like the Excel staff, right? What were, you know, the decisions that we've recently made?
I'm gonna leave that up to Lois, to be honest with you.
Lois, yeah.
Yeah. So you know, that, that's her program, and it's not a school program anyway, it's, I believe it's run by the town, by the park and rec department. If I'm not mistaken.
I just wanna say that I've had several parents reach out to me and say that out of all the summer programs that they involve their kids in the summer, the Excel program is the one that they really, really hope goes forward. It's, they trust Lois, and they trust her to follow guidelines and social distancing and, and to follow protocols. Whereas they, they didn't feel that way about whatever other camps they were considering sending their kids to, so, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, like I said, early on, she's, you know, we weren't thinking it, but as we get closer, I mean, I really honestly can't imagine that it would open, but you know, who knows? So let's see what they say, you know, on the 18th, maybe we'll have some better guidance.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll punt that one down, so not yet completely off the table.
Correct.
Very good, that's, I appreciate those priorities, because I think that's a big one, if, yeah, okay. Thank you, so we'll revisit on the 28th, and we'll continue monitoring Lois, we'll turn to Lois about that.
Yep.
Great. Thank you for putting that together for us and keeping us updated. Ready to move on then to the MSBA update?
Moving on.
Alright, moving on. Okay, so you'll see in your folder number 13, there are some notes on that, and Mary Jane, do you wanna just lead us through that?
Jennifer, do you wanna talk about it, or do you want me to do it?
Whoever, yeah.
I think she might be on mute.
Oh, yep, she got muted.
Okay.
Alright.
Oh, there you go. I don't mind doing, go ahead.
Either one, why don't you take it away? You prepared?
Well, I just wanted to say that we had a kickoff with MSBA to talk about the beginning process for, you know, what's it gonna look like over the next at least 18 months? So, you know, we had members of the MSBA there, members of the town, including Greg, Johnson, Beth, Beth Lynn, Jennifer, myself, Mike Guzzo, Justin DiMarco. So we had talked to, Irene, were you there? I think Irene might have been there, I'm not sure. No, maybe she.
I don't think I made this one.
I don't think she was. Anyway, we talked about certain things that had to be done, and one of the first things was, was the initial compliance certificate, which we did, Mary, thank you for the documentation, we ended up doing it by hand, but we got that out, and that's in the mail, so step one is done, you know, we said we're ready to, you know, work with you. Again, all of these things are preliminary until the town actually, you know, looks at the feasibility and study, but right now, we're starting the process. June 30th, the deadline for a school building committee has to be submitted. I sent a letter to families via email, it is also on our social media and our website, take a look at that, I do have one person who responded already. But we're gonna be very specific with who is going to be on that committee, I mean, I know a lot of people may wanna be part of it, but we have a prescribed group of people that the MSBA has directed us to invite, so you know, we're gonna be very specific in choosing the people in on the committee who have the qualifications that, that are required. So that's something we'll be looking at, once we get the applications in, we'll take a look at them and, and go through them and find out what the qualifications are, and build our team that way. If we have too many, we just may have a lottery and see how that works out. So we have, the next thing we have is a district educational profile, I really have to get working on that. I looked at it a few times, but I haven't really done a lot of work on it, so that's something, that's the next step. Gonna have Jennifer take it from here, because she knows about the eligibility period, I think she has all that in her head, even though it's on here.
So in terms of, I think these are just forms that we need to submit and have signs to make sure that there are, certain folks can get access to the FBA system where we are submitting information. So these would be people like Justin DiMarco, myself, the superintendent, and other people who need to get access to be able to submit information, size regarding some of our building, current structures and those types of things, so that, that's all those eligibility period access forms are, and that will allow us to submit the required information through MSBA. It's just, for whatever reason, their process requires, you know, an individual application to submit that component. And then similarly, for the maintenance and capital planning, those will be myself, Justin DiMarco, the new director of facilities, once that position is hired, where we're submitting that information, all leading up to hopefully a feasibility study warrant article. You know, we were anticipating, and again, I think it's really important to note that all, everything is subject to change with, with all of these pieces, we're anticipating a fall, October special town meeting warrant article with the information related to the feasibility study and the ballot question that we are required to have. We need to have all of this done by January 26th of 2021. Otherwise, our eligibility period will end, and we will not be invited into the feasibility phase. You know, but we certainly don't have to wait until then, which was our purpose for having the October special town meeting in that capacity. I do just wanna talk for a second about the school district educational profile questionnaire, a lot of this information is information that we submitted through our statement of interest in regards to the physical plant layout, you know, what, what classroom spaces we have, what sizes they are, how they're being used, what our educational program currently looks like. There are components of this that are visioning in terms of what would our preferred option be in terms of what kind of programming we will have, so we will be sending out community surveys around the type of structure we would like to put in place, and that would be in the, around, you know, do we want to maintain a pre-K through three? Do we wanna look at other grade configurations, those types of things? Do we wanna look at sort of different, you know, we currently have the pod structure, do we wanna look at something different in that capacity? I think it's really important to note that when people see these surveys, this is not the feasibility study. The feasibility study will look at all of the options and will tell us the details and the data about all of those options, so we are not presuming any sort of conclusion as, as a result of this process, so you know, I don't want folks to think that when we're saying we wanna pre-K through whatever building, that we are presuming that we will replace the entire building. We will still be going through, if we are able to be successful in this eligibility phase, we will still go through the process of looking at what are the best options for Maynard, which could include renovation, it could include building onto an existing building, it could include a new space. There's, there's lots of different components, and that feasibility study will give us answers to all of that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. And one other thing that, so two questions we had asked if they were in it, if they were considering delaying any of the timelines, and they weren't at this time. They, they also said that they have, at this time, they're moving forward, they have the funding allocated, but they can't guarantee what's gonna happen for, like they're moving forward with people that are in the pipeline at this point. That's all I could say.
Which, basically, basically if the town doesn't, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So basically, if the town, if at some point the town decides not to pursue the feasibility study in the fall, and we don't enter the phase, and I know consideration that passes been mentioned where we would kinda go back to the beginning or start over again. Is it understood that that start over again now is even further than potentially it could have been before, so where maybe eight years might be like 15 or 20 years? As a possibility?
That could be the case, yes.
Okay, so it really, the.
Shut your face.
Uh-oh, Sarah, I think you need a mute, sorry.
Natalie needs to mute.
So yes, essentially, they're not sure what the pipeline, what the funding will be for districts that are not currently in the pipeline, so if we get out of the pipeline, then we could, particularly if we see a recession similar to what we saw in 2008, with limited amounts of resources being able to go into school building, et cetera. You know, I think that's something to note. I also think it's important in terms of the community conversations about this feasibility study, is that this is something that we will need to be doing likely anyway, regardless of what we want to do within that building, because with the systems that will be failing in the next 10 years, those will meet the threshold for changing the building and having to bring it up to 80. So, you know, this component allows us to do the feasibility study and get 50% reimbursement of that. If we choose not to pursue that, at some point, we will be doing a feasibility study, because we will have to renovate that building to the extent required by law.
And just pay out of pocket.
At 100%.
At 100%. Right, right, right. And just to be clear, that they, they were able to tell us that the, if all, if we were able to get all submissions in by January 1st, the reimbursement rate would be 55%. It's unknown, they said it's unknown after January 1st, and they don't know if it will go up or down.
Right.
So that means, like, say the feasibility study costs us, overall, it costs, I think we were talking about putting aside more than what we needed, so say we put aside a million, then if we got every, if everything was approved and in, and we were set by January 1st to move into the second phase, if it was approved, then they would, they would be, they would be reimbursing at 55% of that.
And so I think basically this means that, well, this is, this is part of our townwide discussion on how we pursue, or, or how we look at our long-term future planning for our town with all the different priorities that are at play.
Right, there's gonna definitely have to be a campaign for, you know, on behalf of the town and the and the school committee to really advocate for, for this project to happen, I mean, especially with what just happened now, it's gonna be difficult. But I think, I think you're just gonna have to really weigh the options and really lay it out, just like you did Bethlin, if you don't do this, we're gonna be responsible for 100% of it, and, and where's that money gonna come from? So at least this way allows the town to plan a little bit ahead. So, so that, that's what's good about this particular process.
Jennifer, I know you did a fantastic, like a document that had like all the different costs. And I know it was, I'm thinking about how do we just keep that as a living document potentially in some way? I know we're gonna be like doing the roof potentially over the summer, and, and just thinking about like maybe even, I don't know if this makes any sense, but a scenario where if we have funding, this is what that looks like, and without funding, these are the, I know Justin had put, you and him had worked together on something that, was something like that, is that right?
Yep, no, I have a spreadsheet that includes the fire station, the roof, and the building project for Green Meadow, called, called so specifically so that we don't presume that we are building a new building.
Right, right.
Yes, I have that document, I have updated it, I had updated it probably a month and a half or two months ago before this entire situation occurred with what we anticipated for the roof component, but I certainly can update that, and we can, we can put it wherever we would like. And I believe it's, it may not be, it was shared at one point with, with all of the boards. I can, we can figure out whether that's in the drive folders, or, or if I need to resend that, but yeah.
Yeah, I know we, we have a folder we've created since, and I don't know exactly, there was some tweaking maybe that had to go, because Justin, you guys were collaborating really great on it, but I, I think that we just, that'd be great if we could have at the forefront of our conversations as we're engaging like with and without, and what that looks like. Because I think that's the part that people need to see, like how does it look like with, and then also, you know, yeah, anyway, thank you Jennifer.
Yeah, and I think probably part of that conversation should be the work that the finance committee had done with the presentation that occurred during that tri-board meeting, in terms of looking at, you know, tax impacts and things of that nature, because that was a lot of effort that went into that, that really showed some of the, not the complexity, some of the simplicity of what this might, might look like. So I think those pieces, and again, at this point, likely all of the FinComs work over budget projections and revenues and all of that will need to be significantly updated, but, you know.
I think Jillian, yeah, no, they have started doing that. I know they showed a slide the other day and I don't know if Ken wins the win, but it, but it was just to that point, kind of reassessing what the, and it wasn't even going as far as five year, it was really like three year or just a little shorter term, the implications, but I think that that is helpful. And I believe we're supposed to have a tri-board meeting in July, correct? Is that right?
We were talking about doing that.
Yeah, so that's really, that might be very timely to then bring all of these things to a head there to reassess and after-town meeting as well.
Anyone else have any other? Yes, go ahead, Mary.
Said that I was going to put together a letter that succinctly talked about all the reasons that the fall town meeting was where we needed to be for the feasibility and it's everything that everybody's been talking about. And it's right now in Justin's hands for him to just critique and see. And then after he finishes, I'll send it to everybody else. You know, but it's a good start because it basically lays everything out and then it's the same information that we're going to educate the people on. So what, you know, the reasons, it's the best bang for our buck.
Now is that reinforcement of our recommendation, correct?
That's exactly right, yep, just so that, because we've had so many conversations with the selectmen, with the FinComs sporadically. So it just puts all the pieces together and just talks about them all succinctly, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Looking at it, so as soon as he finishes, I'll get it to you guys.
Thank you. Maro, Lydia, any other thoughts?
On what?
Sorry. Fair enough.
The only thing I wanted to add, which was more about the building committee, the Green Meadow Future Committee had requested, as they obviously will be evolving in some sense, that they would like to maintain that the district have a building committee. Maybe not each building per se, because I don't think there's enough gungst for people to have a separate one each, but I think with the timing of having the financial director also coming on board, it sounds like that would, something that would be helpful to still maintain, I guess, an advisory, a building committee that would work to help prioritize things in all the buildings. And just in that, in that, not, again, not anything to do with MSBA specifically, but more in planning purposes and prioritizing just like capital projects or things like that.
Are you talking about townwide, not just schools?
No, just schools, so school buildings. Yeah, so like the, instead of like having a Green Meadow Future Committee continue, it might be like Maynard Public School Building Committees, you know, or something, whatever, some iteration of that where they would have similar function, but be looking at, you know, with all the different, you know, feedbacks and the different principles and then help, you know, in that, in that regard. And again, yet to be defined, but they felt it would be helpful as we were talking about maintaining our buildings and, you know, providing feedback on needs and whatnot. So again, more to come down the road, but just something that they wanted to, wanted me to share.
And then for everyone to consider in terms of the MSBA committee. That's also.
Yeah, they did have a couple of members who, who had expressed interest for the MSBA building committee.
Yes, so, and there is one school committee member representative to be on that committee. So if folks want to consider that and whether or not they'd like to do that. All right, anything else, MSBA? Okay, and we'll have a discussion further with FinComs too on Monday. All right, so then we're going to move into members' comments. And Ken, did you want to say something further? No, okay, you're going by.
They want to say bye-bye.
See you on Monday.
Bye-bye. See you Monday.
All right, so I don't know what, I'm going to start over with Mary because you're right there and we'll just go through.
I just wanted to reiterate was what was already brought up about the senior signs and how great that whole situation was. Again, you know, the more we can do for the seniors, the, the better. Because they are getting gypped out of a lot and they're really taking it well. Although I've heard various times where seniors have had meltdowns, understandably so. So I'm so grateful for everything that we're trying to do for, you know, for them. So that was it. Short and sweet.
Yeah, thank you. Maro?
Oh. I put together a slide deck for the new member, new school committee member packet, which I will send everybody a link. Lydia and I went over it. There's a couple of things that I'm still a little unsure about. So if at some point, you know, everybody could kind of let me know what other things or, you know, if there's anything that they want included, that would be great on that. And, you know, as I've said in the last few weeks that we've had meetings, I just want to thank, you know, all the staff and, and the teachers with such a great job that you guys are all doing. And then, of course, the rest of our board. And then my biggest thanks going to all the parents that are now teachers. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Lydia?
Let's see, we've already touched on the business manager search. Interviews are Monday from nine to four. The Mary Jane addressed the various scenarios of returning to school, which I'm appreciative that that is being addressed because I think the more planning, the earlier, the better. Regardless of how little we know, just even brainstorming and getting task groups together, I think is really pertinent right now. And I just wanted to reiterate the need for for, I think, considering additional nursing staff as well for, for the fall. But I know that, that there will be a directive and so whatever, that's going to be taken care of. Tri-Board Budget Subcommittee Meeting is the 26th at 7:00 PM. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, which is going to be super unpopular probably, but I received many, many, many emails after our last meeting about our decision on the preschool fees. And one of the points that was driven home time and time again, which I hadn't thought about for whatever reason, was we didn't ask the, the, the teachers about their feelings about what they're providing, what they're able to provide and what they feel would be a, a fair fee schedule for what is being provided. And several of them expressed a lot of, I guess disappointment that they weren't at least brought into the conversation or at least sooner. I know that Jane Vasta was there during the meeting and we talked with her a little bit, but they really felt like we didn't broaden the discussion enough and really take enough variables into account. So I don't know if we are able to revisit that conversation, but if we are, I think we should.
But, okay. Is it okay for us to respond?
Oh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
All right, so I guess my question, we didn't take away the service. We're still, the programs are still in place. What we did was we made it more palatable for parents that, all parents, you know, the 50%, we actually made it more enticing. And for parents that can't afford it, we said, you know, no fee. So I don't understand, I guess.
It was no, no fee, no, no participation.
Right, right, well.
Right.
That's, that's the distinction is that we, we would, you know, you can withdraw. They did have the option if they wanted to do the, the free reduced lunch application process.
Right.
But I don't know the criteria. I just know that there was feedback afterwards where that in the hardship that even we had received, we have the ability through funding, we were getting through the CARES Act and we were not considering the financial impact further to offset the community's needs in that regard by continuing to charge tuition for something. But that's it, not that anything, again, that was just the feedback. It was just that we had an opportunity to help further and we just, we did not, yeah.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, Lydia, that's similar to what you heard.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I think the point was is there are surrounding towns that have, you know, they're making preschool free for the rest of the year. And there are families who, yes, they can still afford it, but aren't really happy about having to pay the amount that they have to pay or they paid ahead of time. And, and I, I'm not sure what the, what the point of contention was there, but paid ahead of time and
Didn't seem equitable.
Yeah, didn't seem equitable or something in the decision that we made. That's, that's, I just feel like we may have been either short-sighted or premature in our decision. That's all.
Well, maybe short-sighted, but I don't think that we were premature because, you know, we needed to make the decision when we made it. So you know, I definitely understand, you know, that there are some people that are, that are unhappy. But I, I felt like, you know, one of the stipulations that I thought we put in was that if somebody was really having a hardship, that they could come and, you know, provide some background on why they were having a hardship and that we would work with them. So I guess I, I feel like we provided enough variables in what we did to, you know, for, for everyone. And without shortchanging our program and the funding that we need. So.
Okay. We also did have, they laid out not just surrounding districts, but we had the spreadsheet of like 20 different, I mean, I don't remember how many exactly, but it was a bunch of different districts and how they chose to deal with it and it was across the board. It was different for how they chose to deal with the funding. Do you remember that spreadsheet?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I will say that as we talk about budget going forward, I would like to make sure that we keep this in the back of our mind about how, you know, to Lydia's point that we, we, we denied families further financial relief by charging them tuition and potentially what decisions we might be doing in the future and where, whatever funding decisions we make with our budget and feedback we're receiving. But how, how that aligns with our overall, what is our messaging to our community?
Yep.
And how we prioritize community needs. And so I just want to make sure, I know it's tough and I don't know the right answer. And I'm not saying anyone does, but I just want to make sure that, you know, each, each decision isn't, can't be really made in a silo in its own, they all have implications in various ways. And I know we're all doing the best we can. But anyway.
One last thing, just to put on your radar that I don't think has been discussed, but we need to pay out Gahan's vacation time and MJ's vacation time and that was not included in the budget considerations. So that's an additional amount of money that is going to need to get covered.
Had that number because we'd asked, we asked for that.
Thank you.
I thought Mary Jane's was included, but I thought that Carol's was not.
Uh, no, I believe it was the other way. Well, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I've got the notes, but yeah.
You mean the notes from last time?
Notes that you and I had when, when I asked the question, the, yeah, I think I might have just, you know, I forget, but yeah.
Irene has her hand raised if.
Well, do you want me to say, I have the total, I can give you the total right now.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
14,090 and 96 cents.
Irene, did you want to say something?
I was just going to add that Mary Jane's would have been included because it was known that she was not, you know, going to be continuing. It was Carol's that was not included because when she decided to retire was beyond, you know, the time when the budget had been put together and presented.
So Mary Jane's is included in the, in the budget that we have?
It should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can double check to be sure, because remember, I didn't put it together. But I know that Michelle would have included a certain amount of, you know, based.
Be great to get confirmation on that.
Leavings, yeah, but I'm pretty sure that Mary Jane's would have been included. I will double check.
Okay.
Carol, Carol's was, that was unanticipated.
Right.
Okay. So Lydia, that number that you mentioned, is that, which, who is that for?
Carol, Carol Gayhan.
Okay.
No, 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 the total number, the total number is MJ plus Carol Gayhan.
Oh, that's the 14,000?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Carol Gayhan alone is just under 5,000.
Okay.
I thought I remembered it being 4,000 something.
Yeah, $4,816.
I think it's likely important to note that some of this is included in this year's budget as well. So we just need to be cognizant of those pieces. And again, with, with the conversation around the preschool and the tuition and all of those components with the CARES Act funding, there are going to be additional costs that we are going to incur that we are going to need to be able to use resources for based on reopenings and things of that nature. So I think looking at things in, in the broad perspective and not isolated programs is important. Sorry, I'm not a member, I shouldn't be commenting.
No, you can.
Wrong agenda.
I'll accept it. I'll with you next time I see you.
Clarifying question, Jennifer. So when you say that it's in the next year's budget, what is in next year's budget?
My understanding is that's part, depending on when the retirement or when the, the staff member leaves the district, when that occurs, it is when, what fiscal year the funds are paid for.
All right, so because Carol's not. July, got it, got it. All right. That's good to know.
All right, anything else, Lydia?
No, thank you, I'll shut up now.
Go ahead, Natasha.
I just wanted to, we are going to be reconvening the negotiations subcommittee to, I know that, if I, I know Mary had sent feedback on the MOA and the director facilities. So if everyone else can also, and I can certainly recirculate that.
Yeah, Ken, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. I don't want to, it's, this will be in an executive session, so I don't want to go into too much detail as these are ongoing. But the broadly information is with town. We're coming back and so it's, we were kind of in the home stretch, I would like to hopefully think. And so that's, we should hear more about this after we meet, I think relatively soon. Anyway, so thank you for feedback, but I'll recirculate it just to highlight it and bring it to everyone's attention again. CPAC Board met yesterday and that was our first meeting. We did decide about having a collaboration meeting again. I know we have some, I hear some noising, I don't know. All right, is that me? No, okay. We will be having a, asking for another collaboration meeting. A lot of it is just a lot of programming conversations, language-based classroom that came up, you know, shifting staffing, feedback that CPAC has received. And so I think it's just healthy that we circle and keep those conversations going. So that, more to come on that. And I will, I would like to ask that the, just with all the feedback that, that has been received, there seem to be two aspects that I would hope that the school committee would consider. One is looking at generally the dual principal model and then. looking at generally the dual-principle model, and then separately, the impact over the summer. I think there are two distinct things that need to have, I think, public conversations about. And so I would like for that to be a consideration as we do, because I, I think that one, again, right now, one is more outside of pandemic crisis, right, and is just general. And how do we, and one is, how do we address it with our current needs that we have on our horizon? And so I don't know the right answer to that, but I, I would like that to be, because it's not affecting just one person. This is broader considerations on, on, on the district as a whole. So that's, that's mine. And I also just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I, I appreciate the public's feedback that they've shared, whatever is important to them, keeping us abreast of, of their experiences. I think keeping us informed is, is, is just important. And so we may not all have, be in sync in how we think, but I do appreciate the public's, you know, engagement in, in these matters that are just important for our schools themselves, their students, and also being cognizant of how we try to marry that with, how do we pay for everything, right? And I think that's the challenge, is a lot of things sound great. It's just trying to find a way that we can make things happen in our current grim financial landscape. So anyway, so that's, that's really what I wanted to really share. And I just want to thank all of my fellow members, Mary Jane as well, because I know this is a lot unfolding at once. And, and just all the team, really, at Maynard Public School, because everyone does give it their all. It's not really just about one person. It's about a team. And I truly appreciate everyone's commitment to doing the best that we all can. And so just thank you.
Yes, I, yeah, I, I could say ditto to the thanks. I just can't, I don't feel like you could say that enough. And we will see, we are floating out possibly even meeting next week, so we can look at that and see possibilities. And I guess the only other thing I would say is that I've done this long enough. First off, just to say that I feel like we, none of us need, we, we could all, I feel like it's, it's actually, I think this, Natasha spoke to this back when she joined, and it's, it's actually healthy that we all come from different perspectives and we not, don't always align. Like, that's, that's as it should be, as reflecting the community, who, you know, like, that's, so I think that that's, I really respect that, and I think that that's important, that we hold the space for that with each other. And so I appreciate that, and that everyone's willing to express where they're coming from and what they, what they need to. And then the other piece is that I still, every email I get in the inbox, as much as I know there are times for me, I can't immediately respond, or we're considering more of a coordinated response to make sure we're putting out the right information for people to realize that, but that I kind of, I feel it. Every single
Yeah.
comments and thing that people are saying, and every single decision that we're, like, I feel it. And I just want to say that, and I, and in these meetings, the point of it is, is to, and even when we get to the public hearing, like, in the, the point is to receive, so it's not about emoting. It's, it's, the point is to receive and to try to take in and consider. So you're not, you may not see the emoting of it, or the fact, the way in which it, it impacts each of us and that we're hearing and considering, and that there's, we get the import. And, and we may not fully understand from each person's perspective, but that we are taking it in and want to hear and listen and understand. So that's, I guess that's all I'll say, in that we're all part of this community together. That makes me.
Oh, no. Oh, no. There's a tear.
I'm on the edge, and it's late. I'm gonna stop now.
There we go. It's never a good ending to a meeting without a tear from Bethland.
Wouldn't be the first time for me. All right. So it's ten thirty-nine. Anyone else? Anything? Last word? Okay.
I'd like to start reading a chapter from War and Peace.
Okay, start now. We'll have a progress meeting.
Put it on the agenda. See who sticks around for that. All right. Well, thank you to all who are in attendance. Thank you to everyone for getting through this meeting and, and staying present. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
And I'll second.
Mary, second. All right, we're gonna adjourn a real call. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Natasha Rivera?
Yay.
Bethany Hulahan, yay. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you. Namaste.
Good night, John boy.
Yeah, all right.